Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the work session for Seabell Air Beach, Monday, November 16th, 2020. Please rise to join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge is to abide by the United States of America, the republic of which stands on nation, under God, indivisible, in the unity of justice and justice. Madam Clark, will you please call her all?
Councilmember Robin Aki.
Here.
Councilmember Marv Beam.
Good morning.
Councilmember Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Rita Swope.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
City Attorney Fred Riley.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Let the record reflect that Marv Beam, Councilmember Beam, and Vice Mayor Gunn are appearing telephonically this evening. Patty, I can barely hear Glenn Gunn. And with regards to hearing, City Clerk has asked that we speak directly into the mic like I'm doing now. If you're two inches away, it's going to work. If you're any further, we're not going to be able to hear you, and then she can't get the right recording. With that, move to item number one, which is discussion with Forward Pinellas and Pinellas County on traffic issues. We had the pleasure of having two gentlemen here from Pinellas County, Whit Lanten from Forward Pinellas and Tom Washburn from Pinellas County. Gentlemen, you all address us over here at the podium.
We're talking to you here. Thanks for the opportunity to have us here. We appreciate it. Tom and I work hand-to-hand on a lot of things. I handle more of the planning things, and Tom handles more of the engineering side of how we deal with transportation. I think our main objective tonight is to hear from you all and make sure we understand what your issues are. And Mayor, we sat down back in February or so with your city manager and filled a whole bunch of different ideas and suggestions that, you know, I think are viable. And so, we'd like to kind of go over some of those again this evening and hear from the councilmembers. You know, I think what we would like to do is then take the input we get tonight, go out, collect some additional data, look at conditions, and then come back to you with some recommendations on what we can implement in the near term. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to Tom, just to see if he had any quick observations or thoughts.
Good evening. Appreciate the invite tonight. It's been a while, Mayor, and Mr. Reeves. We did speak back in February. There are a couple of things that we had on the horizon, you know, with the situation and how it unfolded. There were some things that got put on hold in terms of our data collection. But back in February, we had talked about the speed feedback sign out on Gulf Boulevard in the vicinity of Seventeenth Street. So, what we wanted to do was to collect some traffic volume and speed data. We were able to collect that back in early October. The team's got somewhat back to normal, so we've got a works worth of traffic data and speed data northbound on Gulf Boulevard. So, we are proceeding with installing a speed feedback sign to have the work request into our signal shop to do that. So, that'll be facing northbound traffic right in the area of Seventeenth Street. And again, the idea there was, I think the thought on the weekends was traffic was getting a little bit congested northbound due to maybe people not driving the speed limit in fact, looking out at the beach and some of the other avenues that are out there. So, we did want to collect some before data, just to kind of see, because this is a somewhat different application than we've used these for in the past. So, again, you'll see that going up very soon. I also talked with Mr. Reeves here recently about an additional speed feedback sign out on Bellar Beach Hawsway, and coming down off the bridge, similar to what Bellar Bluffs has in the eastbound direction that they use for speed enforcement. And so, we've got a location picked out. It's right across from Town Hall. We've got an existing Speed Under Thirty-Five sign. So, we'll take and replace that with a speed feedback sign that'll also have the Speed Under Thirty-Five sign up there. The nice thing about these speed feedback signs is it collects data continuously, so we'll get continuous feedback on volumes and speeds. We download that on a regular basis. We can provide that information to you, but we also provide it to the sheriff's office, allows them to target enforcement if they do notice patterns where there is a speeding problem. And then, I guess, last thing I'll offer is I did listen to Whit's presentation at your last meeting. I went back in preparation for this, so I understand there was some discussion about Bellar Beach and Gulf Boulevard. I think some of the suggestions are feasible. So, we'll, you know, again, want to listen to any addition when we put you out tonight, but, you know, our next steps out there will probably be to collect some traffic data, turning movement counts specifically, and to be able to use that for some modeling to see, you know, how we expect it will work with some of the changes that we're looking at, in particular, the southbound left turn, and see if we can't make that a little bit better. So, with that, if there's any questions or any input or any additional discussion, I'll do my best to answer any questions.
Tom, to bring everyone up to date, it was almost a year ago, I guess, last February that we all met, city manager and myself, after speaking with council. I think some stuff got pushed out to the public in the wrong way, and I don't know how it got that way. I'll clear it up tonight, and I have you gentlemen here. Lynn Reeves is at that here. Number one, one of the suggestions that had come up was trying to toll the bridge. We found out subsequently that that's not possible because it was federally funded, okay? Lynn Reeves made the suggestion of congestion pricing. Now, I have not heard anything about congestion pricing. Certainly, now, you can't do it on the bridge, but is there any other option, okay? I'd like to know if that's an option. I had discussed with you, actually going back two weekends ago, the idea, to me, it looks like there's excess land, if you will, on the bridge that could be done, and I think you even agree with me, by maybe redoing the lines, redoing the paving without sacrificing anything. I don't know if it gets us anything. That was the question mark, but certainly, it was something that was going to be looked into. What you're referring to, the speed signs, this other one's a new one, this one coming down, I know where that came from. I know law enforcement had said something about them, probably passed that on to Lynn Reeves. I'd heard the same thing. I think it's a good suggestion, providing it's not in front of anyone's house. I don't want anybody looking out their window at a speed sign all night. But the one on Gulf Boulevard, it was law enforcement's, I've been speaking to the on-duty sheriffs, that, and my own example, by driving up and actually into the traffic jams, around Seventeenth, Eighteenth Street here is where the traffic would stop miraculously. There was this misnomer that it goes all the way up to Clearwater. I never saw that, including Easter Sunday, including Sand Festival. It was here. And I think the only thing I could attribute it to, and I think what you just mentioned, I think people are sightseeing. They actually are going too slow in our city in that spot on the weekends, when it's traffic, and they're backing everything up to the bridge. So, that's where that sign idea comes from. Those were the four ideas we had. Now, I don't think we had a chance to get back with council, so maybe council has some other ideas. People had a lot of opinions on this in the city. Some people said nothing could be done, but maybe so, but, you know, if anybody has ideas, this is the time to bring them up to these two gentlemen, because it's not going to happen unless it happens through them. But I want to just get it, see if I can get an update on my suggestions, and then certainly go and tend with everyone else's ideas.
Sure. I'll let Whit speak a little bit about the congestion pricing. That's really my area of expertise. We did look at the feasibility of tolling the bridge, and we followed up with you on that and found out that that wasn't feasible because of the way that was funded back during construction. In terms of restriping on the bridge, we do get to a pinch point if we need to maintain the white lanes. So, we don't really gain a whole lot by trying to restripe. I think we were looking at two lanes in one direction, one lane in the other direction. We did do some restriping recently to try to get some more left turn storage as you're approaching Gulf Boulevard. But we do run into a pinch point, so we run out of space when we get onto the bridge with that restriping idea.
So, that really will not help to do the restriping. The sign that you're talking about coming off the bridge, that's going to be away from people's property? And I don't want someone looking at this out their window. I don't think that's right.
Yeah, the way these work, this will be right across the street where you've got the existing Speed Under Thirty-Five. And those signs remain dark until somebody's approaching, and then they kind of flash the speed at them. So, they're directional towards the direction of travel. So, you know, there shouldn't be any, and I think it's far enough to the east that it won't shine into anybody's front, but we can adjust that if necessary. That's about the first place. You've got some grass here as you're coming off the bridge. So, I think we're clear of any property across, anything adjacent to it.
Did the study, the preliminary study that you did on Gulf Boulevard prove out the information that we had at around Seventeenth, Eighteenth, where they're getting model mix?
The speed study was interesting. We collected it for seven days, so we got weekend, you know, five weekdays worth of counts. There is a time period where the, overall, the eighty-fifth percentile sits around thirty-nine. It's supposed to be at thirty-five, so it's within the range, but the median speed is actually down around thirty. And when I looked at the data, it gets real concentrated, not just on the weekends, but just about every day, you'll see the bulk of the speeds. We separate it into five mile-per-hour increments, but between twenty-five to thirty-four, there's a concentration. So, there's a noticeable slowdown, and when the off-peak periods for northbound, you can see it starts to switch back and the speeds get a little bit higher. So, it was an interesting analysis that we looked at.
The other thing you had spoken about with us was camera control at this intersection, being able to adjust light timing and stuff. I know you put that into place. It's kind of hard to tell last year because, you know, we got hit with this virus, we really never got the peak season the way we normally experience it. What were you finding in the meantime, though, when you started with that?
Well, as we discussed, our traffic control center operates 24/7, and so we had asked our operators to keep an eye on this intersection in particular, especially on the weekends as you get into the afternoon periods. And I believe they were making adjustments as necessary when they started to notice some bad news. You know, it does become a point at times where it's just too congested in all directions, you know, seeing fewer service so much. But I think they've done a good job of monitoring it. They continue it since part of the rest of the few nights on the weekends. And, you know, I think I might give you guys the number, but we've got a number directly into our control center. It's four six four eight nine two six. That'll get you right to the operator who's on call at the time.
It's four six four eight nine two six?
Yes, sir.
Seventy-seven, of course, right?
Yes, sir. And so, there, you know, if they get a phone call, they can actually take a look at whatever the trouble spot is in real time, and if they're able to address it from the control center, they can do that. Otherwise, they can dispatch a technician and call some media.
Councilman Lynn.
I was just going to say that, you know, we've had a lot of complaints about speeders on golf, especially at night, and motorcycles. I think that slowdown at Seventeenth to Nineteenth is because of those two gigantic houses, and I don't think anything's going to change that because they just draw people to slow down and observe. I've even seen people stop and take a picture before going. Would there be any benefit to lowering the speed limit to thirty? Because I know farther south, it drops down to thirty. Have we looked into that and thought about that to help with the speeding and, and I don't know, if the speed limit's thirty and people are slowing down to twenty-five to look, it may not be as noticeable, the congestion? Just a thought.
We've been working with the city of Indian Rocks Beach on a vision for Gulf Boulevard, and that was a big issue there, too. And one of the recommendations we had for them is work harder to maintain the thirty-mile-an-hour speed with feedback signage, with additional enforcement, with other measures, maybe pavement markings, things like that, because it is thirty-five north and south, and people don't pay attention to that too much. They get to a point where they're comfortable, and Gulf Boulevard is a straight road. It's really easy to get up to speed to forty, forty-five, if you're not delayed by the vehicle in front of you. I think from a travel flow standpoint, you would move as many cars through the corridor at thirty versus thirty-five. But what you have to be mindful of is if you don't change the design somehow to temper those speeds, then you just kind of get in this do loop of enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. So, what we like to do when we lower speeds is not just change the speed limit sign, but to figure out some way to get motorists to react and drive slower. It could be through pavement treatments. You know, sometimes there are speed tables or rumble strips or things like that that are used that send an audible signal. That may not be desirable in a community because you can hear that. The textured pavement where there's a speed bump, it's not a speed bump, it's a speed table, so it's not like you're driving over a parking lot in Publix or anything like that. Those are pretty effective. Or you can, in some instances, you can shrink down the lane lengths a little bit, and that provides that side friction. So, there are some techniques we can certainly discuss, but I think just arbitrarily lowering it from thirty to thirty, thirty-five to thirty without some of those design changes, you won't have as much effect.
Because Indian Rocks is thirty.
They are thirty, only through the city of Indian Rocks Beach, and when you get down to Indian Shores, it's back up to thirty-five.
Right, because if you're going north and you're at thirty, and then all of a sudden you set thirty-five, that's just open for, hey, let me now go forty-five to make up time. So, that's why I was thinking, if you're going thirty, just keep going thirty and hopefully...
I think it would make sense to have consistency way up.
Can I get in there next time?
Yes. Yes, Marv.
Okay, thank you. Marv, good.
Marv. Marv, the mayor recognized you.
Okay, thanks. I couldn't hear all the conversations, unfortunate. Quarantine has got me going nuts. But anyway, back to the speed limit on Gulf Boulevard. Let's face facts, it might be most at thirty-five, but with the six, the six other miles per hour, it's forty-one. And the big danger is at forty-one, when people try to pull out of any of our streets, from the crossway up to Clearwater borderline, it's dangerous. Face facts, especially on the weekends or on a busy holiday. And I don't know what else to do about it. You know, we asked, Tom, we asked you guys to continue the traffic turning on a red. Well, that's fine, it works good, but it doesn't give anybody that lives here a chance to get out in the center lane safely and kind of barges your way into the traffic going south. It's just not safe at all. I don't know what the answer is. I don't know what you can do to help us, but as long as Clearwater keeps developing, there's nothing we can do to stop the traffic. We've got to figure out a way to make it safe for the citizens, even someone walking across. Unfortunately, a lot of the people do not use the crosswalks, and that causes another problem. So, that's enough talking about that. But I'm going to go on to the crossway and Gulf Boulevard intersection going south. We have three lanes here, a left turn lane, and we have two lanes to continue on south, the south lane that merges into one. But if we took the center lane going south and also made that a turning lane to go to the crossway, we do have a merge area that's about a block, a block or two long after that left turn. Would it be advisable or safe to take the center lane, turn a left, as well as the left turn lane to move traffic, stop the backup? I mean, there's been a lot of talk on wanting to eliminate that center island near the crossway. Well, I tell you, if we do that, you're going to see traffic back up all the way to Nineteenth Street. And again, you're not going to be able to get out and get in that center lane to merge south, and neither are residents of Bellar Shore going to be able to get out of their homes or into their homes. So, I'm sorry I missed out on some of the conversation, couldn't hear everything. I hope this was helpful. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
I'll address the issue of the gaps in traffic that you mentioned. You know, there's a number of ways to do that, not having a right turn on red. Certainly, one, the flashing beacons for pedestrian crossing would create a gap as well for people to get out. So, I think that can be looked at. I don't know that you would need any other signal warrants for a new signal, but, you know, anything that you can do to sort of create a little pause in traffic to allow vehicles to exit from their homes, I think would be the kind of issue you would talk about. And that's what those flashing beacons would do, for instance. I don't know if you want to talk about the southbound left turn lane over there.
Yeah, the southbound left turn is what I was talking about initially. We'll collect some turning movement counts. It does seem like it's a feasible alternative, at least to look at and to model. The trade-off you get when you go to a second southbound left turn lane is with the phasing. Right now, you've got a four-section signal head out there, so unless somebody pushes the pedestrian button, if there's a gap in northbound traffic, a southbound left turn, you can go ahead and go. When you go to a dual left turn movement, the only time that that movement will be able to go is when they've got the green arrow indication. But there's a couple of different ways we can look at that. We could take that center lane and make it an exclusive left, so you've got two exclusive lefts. We can also take a look at that as a shared through left and just kind of see which one works a little bit better. They both have the same impact on the phasing. So, again, we'll do the modeling. My expectation is that the level of service will still be acceptable, and we might actually get a benefit with the timings and be able to accommodate some of the westbound movements a little bit more regularly by being able to service the southbound left turns a little bit better and more efficiently.
Aren't you just going to patch up the southbound lane if you do that? The right southbound lane, because you only have one now if you're going through. Somebody's hung up, you know, making the left, now you have only one lane passing through.
Yeah, that, can I just say something? That intersection is very difficult to get through when you're heading south, trying to get off the beach late in the afternoon when everyone's leaving the beach. It's tough to get through that intersection, and it really just bottlenecks because we have the crosswalk there and those medians. And so, you can't, you can't stack in the center lane to turn left, and you can't get around those cars that are trying to turn left if you're going straight. So, it's a big bottleneck. You've got one lane where that crosswalk is, and that's where the traffic is bottlenecked, and it's not so much trying to stacking out because there's, those lanes are clearly open, and it's just backed up, people trying to make a left turn. And you can't make a left turn if the light's red, can't get out of that intersection. So, really, ideally, and I think we keep going back to that crosswalk, maybe to be moved north, or, you know, that median removed to allow more stacking in the center lane. But that is an ongoing problem, and as well so is it going north because cars backed up, because the crosswalk's lit up, someone's trying to walk, cars are trying to go north, they stop. There seems to be a lot of accidents right there. I think people see the red, you know, the right on red, they turn, they slam into the back of someone who stopped at the crosswalk. So, it's a problem area. It's the crosswalk that, that crosswalk should be at the light and not at the median path of block down the road. And I think that's the biggest, it's a flawed location. I don't know who installed those, but, and I do agree, we probably could use additional crosswalks throughout the city. We don't have enough. A lot of people, yeah, a lot of people don't walk in, and then, I know yesterday, I was out and tried to walk in and try to get a car to stop even pushing the button. It's ridiculous. They don't, they don't respect the fact that people are in the process, you know? So, it's a problem. And I, you know, I don't know if it's adding some grass medians or doing something to slow traffic. We have just a lot of traffic issues that are, I think, the high speed limit, I think the wide open road, that center lane is wide open for turns, and people jump in it to pass slower traffic. We don't really have a bike lane, so to speak, so, I mean, maybe it would be a process of narrowing some of our lanes and opening up a bike lane, doing some things that will make it more pedestrian-friendly, and people would be a little more observant. Because it seems like Bellar Beach is really the only stretch of golf that feels like a highway. I mean, the rest of the beaches seem a little more pedestrian-friendly. So, I don't know how we'd go about doing that. Is that talking to you all, or, and who funds this? You know, does NOS County have funding for any of this type of thing?
Yeah, I can give you a little bit of background on those, the RFP crossings where we've got the islands. I think it was probably six, seven, eight years ago that we studied the entire county section, which includes Indian Rocks Beach, Bellar Beach, the city of Clearwater. And we counted pedestrians and bike usage and vehicle usage, but those islands were located where there was crossing demands at the time. And the idea of that three-lane section is just to put a pedestrian crossing across there without any median refuge. Didn't really do anything to increase the safety for somebody wanting to cross from the side to the west side or vice versa. That location that was chosen was one of them where we actually saw a concentration of pedestrians that wanted to cross. And that's kind of what we found as a best practice when we did the study was, you know, figure out where the pedestrians want to cross, because that's where they're going to cross, and then make that location as safe as possible. So, that was just, that was one of them where it got chosen. We went back a couple of years after everything was installed and did an update, just to see how they were functioning, just to see how the demand was, and I don't think we had any recommendations for changes in Bellar Beach. In Indian Rocks Beach, there were a couple of locations that we actually moved. There was a couple of the islands that they wanted taken out for the same type of reasons you're talking about now, it was for getting some left turn movements. So, we did make some adjustments, and this is something that we continue to go back and forth with and take a look at. Is it still serving the purpose that it was intended for? But the county funded, through cooperation with the FDIT, all those improvements. There's no cost to many of the cities, other than any of the aesthetic features in the means, like the trees and the lighting and the irrigation, that was all left to the cities to take care of.
Tom, Jody's point got me thinking about something, and I think she's right about crossing the street. You wouldn't try and get across it. Are we going, do we have any option? Right now, all of our crosswalks are monitored, iPhone monitor, light-type crosswalks. When you push the button, you get light. It's got special features, it's, you know, raised pavement, what have you. As I look at it, it's, you know, Sixth Street has a crosswalk. I don't think there's anything between First and Sixth. I don't think there's anything north of Sixth until you get to the center island. I mean, if I live, you know, on First Street and I want to cross the street, I'm not going to walk up six blocks to cross the street in a crosswalk. I'm going to just go right across the road, which isn't probably the safest thing. Can we have crosswalks that are non-lit, you know, if you will, with the buttons and all that kind of stuff? Can we at least paint some crosswalk signs? Because, I mean, to Jody's point, they don't yield sometimes when they get the lights, but, you know, the state law still says yield to a pedestrian and a crosswalk. So, if you're in a crosswalk, you at least have the law on your side. I don't know if you'll get the car on your side, but is that a possibility? Or do they all have to be these specially equipped crosswalks?
No, there's actually warrants, if you will, for those crossings. There has to be a certain minimum hourly demand typically over a course of the day. So, you know, the locations that we have on that, theoretically, there was warrants at the time. In terms of just striking a crosswalk across the road versus signage, you know, the research shows that doesn't really provide any additional level of safety to just somebody crossing the road. If we were to do that, what we have to do is make sure that that crossing meets ADA standards, so we've got to tie ramps in to the sidewalks. So, there is an additional cost above and beyond just painting stripes across the street. But at a minimum, it would be, you know, a crosswalk with your pedestrian warning signs and probably advanced signs. But like I said, the research, you know, repeatedly shows that that doesn't provide an added level of safety over having nothing.
We, I think we have something like that on Morgan Street, but it does have the pedestrian crossing lights. But you brought up another question for me, and that is, who is responsible for the ADA standards along Gulf Boulevard right now?
The sidewalk is maintained by the county, so any, anything that's sufficient is the county responsible.
Okay, the only reason I ask is because we have several of those treaded-gated domes that are completely loose. I think I asked the city to pick them up because I run the sidewalk, and those things will slip out from underneath you. So, there's at least two that I know of that are gone right now, and a third one that's loose from Hawsway North. So, I don't know how that gets maintained, but we've got serious problems with those throughout the city.
Yeah, I'll take that. Yeah, I'll take that. People are requesting our operations in the city.
Okay, thank you. Should I walk the rest of the sidewalks and see what, see if you need more? Do you want to?
We'll do a comprehensive review anytime we come out. We can do all that.
Okay, all right.
Get the run. Okay.
First off, thanks for coming out, spending some time with us and giving us some attention. As far as traffic goes, what I'm seeing is anything that you do now is only for now because we're already well above peak many times throughout the week, especially during the holiday season and, and spring break, those types of events. There's no way to make this go away. Instead, we, what, I think what we really need is we need a way to, to curb it, to send the traffic elsewhere, another path. And I know it, it sounds impossible, but Clearwater Beach already has a really nice bridge. And I, you know, as much as I don't want to see the other one, definitely don't want to see their traffic anymore. And it sounds like an act of God whenever I'm saying it, but the truth is, it's not going away. Their bridge reaches maximum capacity and they come right down here. There's people that, all they're trying to do is get from somewhere on the main side over to Clearwater Beach, and it's the same thing all the way back. And they don't care about our laws, they don't care about our speed limits, they don't care about our pedestrians, they don't care about anything, especially they don't care about Bel Air Beach. So we need to, we need to seriously start thinking about what to do about Clearwater Beach and their traffic because that is the real problem. As far as speeding goes, that's something that we can actually take care of, but what we can't take care of is the volume of traffic. Everything that we've considered has been, has just been met with, with a brick wall. There has to be a solution, and it's not something we can start planning on in 10 years. This needs to start today. And I'm hoping that you'll take this message back and, and start, you know, getting on the stump for Bel Air Beach because everybody between our traffic light and San Key experiences the same kind of issues, and it's not right. We're not, we're not ranking in the benefit that Clearwater Beach is, with all the income that they bring in. We're basically a no income municipality, and I don't know what the solution is, but we definitely need help. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. I'm, I'm well aware of those issues and I certainly sympathize with you. You know, it'd be, it'd be a real heavy lift to get a new bridge built, but we have tried working with the City of Clearwater to look at any number of avenues that would free up additional capacity and flow along that corridor on the Millwall Causeway Bridge. And the challenge we have is it's not just the bridge, it's the pinch points on either end of that bridge, one of which is right outside my office by the courthouse. So it's a pretty expensive fix to facilitate that. But it is a priority of our board to enhance access to the beach communities. It is a priority that the Department of Transportation and Pinellas County recognize. What I will do is bring it to the attention of our board in our January meeting and just let them know that I continue to hear from you all, I continue to hear the frustration, and, you know, are there some things that we can do? But the roadblock frankly has not been the willingness of the Department of Transportation to consider things. It has been, generally speaking, the City of Clearwater's unwillingness to consider alternatives that would dramatically change that bridge structure. For instance, they have the landscaping down the median and they want to protect that landscaping and that median. So we've suggested a few things about maybe you could have a dedicated lane when peak direction is one way or peak direction the other way and have it converted, but you take out that landscape. And they've got mangroves on the north side, which you can't, you can't address those mangroves because there, there's no more mitigation in that basin, apparently. So it's just, it's, it's a very finite space, but we will continue to look at some options and continue to advocate on your behalf of those. Senator Jeff Brandis has also suggested, to your point about congestion pricing, that maybe we need to look at all the bridges and look at some means of moderating demand when peak gets to a certain point. That is a real challenge when you're talking to all the beach communities that do benefit from tourism. So that's a real dialogue and it's, and it's going to be a hard one. But there are some, you know, New York City is considering a congestion management program like that. Our staff has just initiated work with a consultant on a congestion management process, which is using updated data. We'll be identifying some key hotspots in Pinellas County, and we'll be looking at sort of a toolbox of solutions for those hotspots. So I will make sure that our project manager is aware of this issue and we can direct our consultant to focus some additional energy on that, that issue. That's all I can say right now is we'll continue to look at it.
Thank you very much.
First, I'll be, wait a second, I just want to add something to Dave and I'm going to go over this one. Something that I learned at one of the mayor's council meetings, which you might not be aware of, because I don't think they publicize it that much. This happened a month before the virus hit, but the intent of that whole visit St. Pete Clearwater promotional activity, which they spend millions and millions of dollars on, it pretty much maxed out. What they figure is all the outside of state people coming in, their focus, their big focus is going to be on getting people inside the state to come and use the beaches more. So to your point, it's bad, and then the virus hit the next month, but it's going to get a lot worse if they get their way. So gentlemen, we just got a referendum here, a pass that said we're supposed to use our strategic plan as guidance in every decision we make. Traffic control appears twice in our strategic plan. That's how important it is. So this city thought it's important enough to include it twice in the strategic plan. We need to do something about it. That is absolutely right on this one.
Yep.
Yes, and I want to thank you guys for coming as well. I have a question, and you may not know the answer to it, but has Clearwater Beach or any of the other beach communities considered a water taxi to where you could have parking lots like up there by the Clearwater Beach Bridge? And that way, that can handle a lot more of the traffic coming over to the beach areas instead of them traveling via vehicles?
I'm glad you asked that because that's one I can say yes. We are, we actually formed a committee of our board to deal with waterborne transportation and provide guidance about how we will fund it and sustain it. There is a Clearwater water taxi operator today. One thing that, and I did the study to look at the feasibility of water taxi service here in 2003 as a consultant. The one thing we've learned in that time is that the private sector alone cannot sustain that service. There needs to be some level of public support to have the frequency and the coverage of water, water transportation so that it really does operate as a transportation option for people. So that's what our committee is tasked with, and the idea would be to make that more like a form of public transportation, not necessarily making it publicly operated, but where there's like a more, a more logical framework to how it operates and how it expands, what public dollars can do in terms of either capital or operating. One of the issues is that Dunedin has negotiated a water taxi service with the same operator in Clearwater, but Dunedin negotiated a, I guess they negotiated a not as good of a deal because their residents are paying $3 more per trip than the Clearwater residents are paying. And so that inconsistency from jurisdiction to jurisdiction is kind of a problem. Bel Air Bluffs has advocated, they, they actually have a commissioner on our, on the committee. They've advocated for bringing it down to the, the location at the bait house. And then Indian Rocks Beach wants to have it come down there as well. You know, that's not going to stop your traffic congestion, but it might provide an option for some people. And, and certainly in Clearwater Beach, I think it has the most potential because a lot of the workers who could not find parking on, on the island were using that to get to work back when it first started. So I would encourage you to participate in those meetings. The next one is going to be December 18th, and I think it's at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, but I'd be happy to get you the information if you'd like to come, if you're interested in that topic.
Yes, thank you.
Any other council comments, city manager? Um, this is a work session, but there aren't several members of the public here. Council, do we have any objection to hearing from the public since we have the two representatives that need to hear from everyone? Any objection? There being none, does anyone wish to speak? I'm going to ask that you do it from your seat. This is a rare occasion, but we have them up here. I think it's going to be convenient to have everyone up there. So if you can project loud enough and do it from your seat, that would be great.
June Bensworth, that's straight down our reach. Couple of things, we can see from our bedroom window, all of our Sunday afternoon, we're swimming alive in a silver Cadillac, taking a nice speed. Far whipped around to the left, we went down the center, center island, okay, to pass. And this happens a lot. I've seen motorcycles racing down the center, and they also will drag race all three lanes heading toward Indian Rocks Beach during the night or during the day. So my question being is if we put some kind of small median kind of source, not being worried with impede, any kind of home, okay, but just enough to break up that, that, that piece there in median, would that not help with this issue of people speeding down the center, possibly even with the people that are crossing the street illegally without going to a crosswalk, possibly getting, that's my main point. My other thing is, I saw in Largo, their crosswalk now, we're across West Bay Drive, okay? They have a median going down the center and they're crosswalking. But the, the key thing here I, I noticed was their crossing times were so brightly lit that I mean, it actually startled me and I was not used to seeing something so brilliant from a crosswalk. So, I mean, can we not look at something like that? Then my last point is driving down Gulf Boulevard and I'm going down toward, I want to say Indian Shores, okay? And I saw multiple people crossing without using the walk. Now, other people stopped and we had to stop for traffic from people walking across. And I said, you know, there's, there's a crosswalk sign. I said, there's a button there. And the lady said, I didn't see it. So is there any way we can highlight the buttons on these crosswalks so people that aren't familiar with the area, are not from this area, visitors, okay, see that, that there's a button for them to push so they can get across the road safely? And I don't agree with just a plain crosswalk without some kind of lighting whatsoever because that's inviting problems because you're saying, you can cross here safely. It's what I think it's in the message and, and I'm, I'm not agreeing with that. I think we should always have some kind of a work system there. Thank you.
Do you want to respond?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Coming across the bridge, and it's in Mel Air Bluffs. A lot of people are using that white lining equal of the boat entrance to the boat park over there. They're using that to pass on the light. Is there any way, and then so, so anybody coming out of the park, if they overran the stop sign coming out of the park, that would be possibly an accident. Is there a way of maybe at least putting a right turn only lane sign there maybe so no one tries to pass on the light? Something else that, you know what I'm talking about?
Where does that location?
It's going into the county park.
Okay.
You come in, okay, people are crossing there and then you're supposed to just, supposed to be a turn in, and then there's actually a turn out lane. People are going right across that roadway there and not even paying attention that that's basically the turn into the park they're not, you know? So I've, I've been passed numerous times in front of this little driver, but I've been passed numerous times in the light lane. And I just think if somebody is in the bicycle lane or whatever, if somebody's going to get killed, thank you.
Yeah, I think I'm going to let Tom talk about the medians down the center, but that would certainly be a deterrent. And, and I just worry about introducing additional liability, you know? That would be the thing. But I agree with you, you know, it's frustrating to watch people speed past you and use that center turn lane as a passing lane. That's not what it's intended for. Let me give that some thought, and I'll look into the other issues as well.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say those two-way left turn lanes, we see that activity just about anywhere we've got them. You know, if you're out on State Road 60, they've got, you know, seven lanes, you know, three in each direction with a two-way left turn lane. We've been working with DOT on Curly Road as you get east of Alt 19, they've got a similar three lane section. And there's a couple of locations there where we're going to put some, we call it quick curb, but it's some of the plastic curbing diagonal in the turn lane to kind of break it up a little bit and prevent, you know, people using it as a passing lane. You know, we're trying to figure out the local, well, we figured out the locations there, but, you know, the trick there is figuring out locations where you're not going to prohibit left turns either onto or coming from the side streets. So we're working on that right now actively on Curly Road. DOT's got some plans in some of their areas where they've got two-way left turn lanes to do the same type of thing. It's, it's somewhat of an inexpensive quick fix, short of putting in a raise to kind of create median, but it still serves the same purpose. In terms of, and you see that quick, you mentioned the boat ramp. If you go just a little bit farther east of there, there's another location that has a right turn drop where we've added some of this quick curb so that when somebody gets into that right turn lane, they're sort of forced to make the right turn so they can't jump back in and pass somebody. So that's certainly an option if, if that's what's going on in the boat ramp. And we can sort of take a look at that through some observations and see what the issue is. And that RRFP that you mentioned in Largo, that's kind of the first of its kind here in the, in the county. So yeah, we were made aware of that and we've been out to look at it. And you're right, it is pretty impressive.
Anyone else here? Citizens? Council on last comments?
I have a kind of question. What is kind of, what's the takeaway of this meeting? I know you came to talk to us, but I don't want it just to be a discussion and then we leave and there's no follow-up. So what is the takeaway from this?
I was just going to invite him back. You got, you made me two. So you got two invites to come back. Won't you like to come back?
Yeah, well, I think Tom and I need to talk.
Next February is not good enough.
Yeah, yeah. I think we need to, what we wanted to do was hear what you had to say, and you've had some good comments and some thoughts here. So what we'd like to do is have a plan for data collection and give us a little time to collect the data we need to collect, and then we'd be happy to come back to you as soon as we're ready with my game plan for what we think is feasible and then let's go from there. I see some of the things that you were talking about maybe being incremental in nature, like there's some short-term things that we can go probably do, and then there may be, such as Mr. Gaddis' comment, maybe some longer-term strategies that we need to kind of figure out how to message and build a little more of a dialogue on. But yeah, let's start with what we can do and I would say, what, a couple of months maybe, come back early part of, of 2021, February? Well, I don't know how quickly we can get the data collected, and I'm always leery of collecting data in November and December, but it's a weird year anyway. It's a weird time anyway. I don't know how soon we're going to be back to normal, but we will put it, put our brains together about some data.
Eddie, I have a question. You're free.
Okay, thank you.
Communicate with your city manager to let you know what a timeframe might be. Does that seem reasonable?
That's good. Yeah, I mean, just keep in mind, I mean, obviously you know it's, you know, I don't know how busy, the busy season's going to be, but the busy season's coming. So anything we're going to test, February, March, April, great time to test it. So, you know, I mean, once you get past April, it just by itself kind of goes away for another six months and then it, you know, comes right back.
And, and you know, I, I just need to say that this, the region is growing, so it's not just the tourism. There, there was a million and a half more people moving into Hillsborough County. There's another 500,000 moving into Masco. We're not creating any more beach. So as the population grows, we're going to continue to face these pressures. So I do think we do need to come up with some good long-term solutions here that anticipate what the next 25 years are going to be like.
Thank you for coming.
Mayor?
Yeah?
The Vice Mayor had a question.
Sure, we have one last question. Glenn Gunn.
Yes, thank you very much for coming out to address the council. Glenn Gunn here. I did have a question. The, the City of Bel Air Beach recently planned to effect a traffic calming policy, and I would like would like, I, I believe the county also has a traffic calming policy, and so my question is, is how do all of our concerns and requests online or, or fit in with that policy, or where do we go from here? Does it, does it circumvent some of those, those concerns, or do?
I'll let, I'll let Tom address the county's calming policy, but it's not unusual for cities to have those different kind of policies, and a lot of times, traffic calming is a combination of engineering and enforcement. Uh, so, you know, it's your own resources and what you think you can do in your community. So they don't conflict necessarily unless you're talking about a state-maintained or a county-maintained roadway, and then there's obviously coordination that needs to happen.
Well, yes, that's exactly, you know, we don't own Gulf Boulevard, so my question is, is how does the county or the state traffic calming policies, uh, fit over that? And how do we interact with that? Because, you know, all of the things you talked about tonight, you know, changing the reaction to the drivers, not just changing the speed limit, but changing the, the attention of the driver and the physical barriers, or even just the visual appearance of a roadway has effects on traffic calming. So my question is, is does the county policy, I mean, when we put in a request, I mean, does it circumvent some of these issues and need for studies and that sort of thing? Or how does that work?
I think it's mainly, it's, it's, it's a, it's a level of coordination. It doesn't preclude anything, but it just means you have to have a dialogue and a conversation. Tom, do you want to?
Yeah, I guess what I would say is our, our traffic calming policy is specific to residential neighborhoods, it's just local streets, and it's, it's dealing with speeding and cut-through traffic in residential neighborhoods. So, um, our policy as it sits really doesn't apply to rooms like Gulf Boulevard or the causeway. So we look for those other engineering measures, and we make sure that we've got the data to support whatever changes that we make.
But doesn't mean the community wants it or just go.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Absolutely, and everything that we've done out there has been in coordination with the city of Biller Beach, Indian Rocks Beach, or City of Largo. And that's the way we intend to continue. So, you know, we'll collect the data, we'll make recommendations, but we'll rely on the partnership that we've got to, for implementation.
Anything else, council?
Thank you. Eddie, I can just barely hear the speakers.
Thank you very much. Okay, we move on to item number two. This is to discuss, remove restrictions regarding discussion items on the regular council set. I can't listen to you. Five minutes. Discuss, remove restrictions regarding discussion items on the regular council session agenda by Vice Mayor Gunn. Um, the description is, experience has shown that council should utilize all opportunities to discuss slash debate relevant issues in a timely manner. Postponement until work sessions often results in lost momentum, lost public awareness, and often gets superseded by other issues. Uh, with that, we'll turn it over to Vice Mayor Gunn.
Yes, sir, I can just barely hear everybody speaking, and, uh, so I'm going to kind of broadcast in the blind here. Lynn Rees will be familiar with that term, but, uh, I'll just cover what I, what I've, I've made some notes here. Uh, I'm hoping everybody got the handout that I provided tonight, and it kind of outlined some of the things. The, uh, first of all, the, the need, there's a bad news with that, uh, we'd like to optimize the time available. The council only meets two times a month right now, and the real question is, is it really enough to get all, all the work done? We have a routine business of the city, the tactical stuff, and that's what we task the city manager, Lynn Rees and his staff with. And then we have the strategic and the, uh, the procedural stuff that's required by ordinances and resolutions and all the, uh, the formal business of the city. So the question is, is really, do we have enough time and/or is that time being utilized in the best manner that's possible? Some food for thought would be, other places have a best practice of having work sessions just before a council meeting so that all the discussion takes place beforehand, it's fresh in everybody's mind, and you can go right into the, uh, the formal procedural stuff and, and knock that stuff out. So, uh, optimize the time available. There's obviously a unique distinction between our regular council sessions and our work sessions, and I'll come back to that in just a minute. Uh, there's some anecdotal feedback we're getting, hey, you know, some of this stuff is just too rigid, which results in adversarial kind of relationships and fostering a frustration. And then from the public relations perspective, uh, we, some of the feedback is, hey, we're stifling our resident engagement and feedback there. So coming back to these unique distinctions between the regular council sessions and the work sessions, my subjective opinion is that I see a huge difference in the congeniality, collegial engagement of everybody between the work sessions and the regular council sessions. It just seems to me that the work sessions are much more collegial, it seems to get work done much more effectively and move right along. And then we get into regular council sessions, and we get into some heated debates, and passionate kind of, uh, things start to overflow there. So my question that I've asked myself, and I've been doing some thinking of that, is what is, what's taking place between the two that results in such a, 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 opposite end of the spectrum reaction and getting stuff done there? And, uh, I think a lot of it goes back to this rigidity, and, uh, so the good news is we've got the charter amendments coming down the road, and if you look at the existing charter, section two point oh four, it says we can't change some of that stuff by ordinance, and obviously, as long as it's not in conflict with the charter, then we do have some latitude within that stuff. But coming back to the differences between the regular council sessions and the work sessions, I've done a lot of thinking about it, and, and in my mind, I think the primary difference has to do with the role of presiding officer in these two things. In, in the work session, it's much more relaxed, there's, uh, there's critical thought, and some, uh, uh, logical discussion in some of this stuff, whereas when we go into the regular council session that we start to govern it by Robert's Rules of Order, we, we get pinned down into, hey, a very formal motion and debate, debate kind of thing, how long you can speak, limited discussion, that sort of thing. And what I'm starting to, something that's started to come into focus for me is, the thing that's been causing the frustration in these regular council sessions is the role of the presiding officer. And, and I've, I've done a lot of work, and if anybody goes into Google the role of the presiding officer, what, what you do, what you come up with is that the presiding officer is there primarily to facilitate and keep the order, uh, in a productive fashion there. He, he's not really meant to take sides in the debate or discussion, and that's where we're running into the sticky rigidity, because our charter, they, the conflict arises because the charter says every council member votes. And yet, when you go in and you look at, you Google some of the role of the presiding officer, again, he's, he's not there to persuade the vote, he's not there to discuss, he's not there to try to say who's right or who's wrong, he's just to preside over the meeting and the members of, of the, the body. And I think that's where we've been getting into this conflict here, because it's been kind of a fuzzy line of distinction between the two, and it's caused from frustration rather than just raising the gamble and running the meeting, there's been some participation in the debates and the discussion and that sort of thing. So that's where I think we need to go back and kind of think about this thing a little bit. I'm not saying what's right or what's wrong, I'm just kind of, I'm getting something into focus here that's saying, I think that's the source of our frustration here. And once again, the good news is that the charter amendment has come down the road, and we now have the ability to change some of that and bring it into a little bit, uh, different order of how we want to conduct business. Uh, so the second thing is the areas of focus. And, uh, again, I go back to this motion debate issue versus intelligent discussion without the formality of motions, that sort of thing. Again, the presiding officer role, the time factor limitations. A lot of this stuff that removes discussions from our agenda is based on trying to conserve time. And, uh, now I think we need to start thinking about possibly bringing discussions back into this thing, and that's certainly doable, because there's a section of Robert's Rules that kind of relaxes those things for small bodies and committees. And I think, uh, that may be a little bit more in line with what we're trying to accomplish here. It allows for voting by unanimous consent, uh, because you assume there's a motion, and if there is any kind of dissent, then you can take it to a formal vote. Again, all of our charter, section two four oh seven, roll call votes are only required for ordinances and resolutions. So we can go back and kind of start thinking about this whole thing. How do we, how do we want to relax things? Obviously, there's going to be things that need to be very, very formal when it comes to enacting codes and ordinances and resolutions, but what are those areas that we can kind of relax and have some intelligent discussion on and, and go back and forth and, and facilitate how business is done and possibly engage our residents? This, this whole thing about, uh, kind of, uh, alienating our residents to the point where they feel like they're being subjected to ridicule or something else, needs to end, because I, I think we're getting ourselves into a position whereby people don't want to come to council meetings because they're feared that they're going to be seen about and questioned or, or, or whatever. And I think anybody who's been to the Florida Nega Cities training, they talk about the aspect of a, a virtual sunshine, in fact, where you create an environment where people don't want to come to a meeting, and therefore you're creating a virtual sunshine or conflict. Implementation goes back to this thing now, we've got the, the charter amendments. I think the city manager has probably some perspective on what the next steps are to getting those things through the state approval process or, or whatever. So my question is, is what's the timeline for the implementation of these things so that we can be moving forward and kind of building a strawman how we want to facilitate future business? And, and how we want to turn on and turn off certain aspects of what we want to relax, what we don't want to relax, how we turn it on, how we turn it off, that sort of thing. Uh, and that's it. Draw the boundaries and exceptions to some of this stuff. So I'm just trying to provide some food for thought, and, uh, a lot of it, again, is a subjective opinion, and just some, some thought, and look at some of the stuff I've read online. So I'll just open it up to discussion from there.
I'll open it up to the discussion. Robin, off to you first.
Do you want to go first, that's fine?
No, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
No, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from, because our meetings do seem to go on, but my observations and my increased doodling tell me that it's because we do a lot of rambling. I'm more of an hit to the point, say it be done. So I think if we started discussing in concise points and not rambling and hearing ourselves talk, that would speed up time. Um, as far as, you know, what you addressed, I made notes about the residents coming and them not wanting to come, I would say more residents are coming to our meetings since I've been on council than for previous years. So I don't see that as a problem. Yes, we should respect our residents and allow them to talk, but in the same suit, they should also respect us. So respect goes both ways. And I think Robert's Rules of Order helps with that. One thing I must say as far as the residents going, I think we can tighten up and fix our order of our meetings, and maybe, obviously, speakers go first, like we did tonight, but then after that, because I know some people might be here to talk about like the marina or the sign, instead of, you know, talking about the law enforcement. If we can put some of these hot topics up at the top, that way the residents that do come, we can get to those points, and then when they're done and satisfied, then they leave. That way we do get maximum resident engagement. So I think that's one solution to that. Another thing is, I guess about the, the, the regular council session versus the work sessions, as far as the formality, I think it's because in the regular council sessions, we have to make decisions. There's a sense of finality. With the work session, we don't make decisions, we discuss it, so then when we finally get to work, our regular meeting, we can make a decision and hopefully not have all that debate there and have it here. So I think there has to be a different dichotomy with regular versus work versus formal versus informal, so I don't think that's going to change. And according to our charter, if I'm not mistaken, the presiding officer, he gets a vote, so I think he should be part of the discussion, because why are you going to vote if you can't give your opinion? Googling is always dangerous in medicine. We always say do not contact Dr. Google. Dr. Google does not have a medical degree. So in this case, doctor or Google doesn't have a legislative degree. And I think that's my main points, my concise, main, non-rambling points from now.
Thank you. I, I am going to go next, and then I'm going to turn your around here to the other side. I, I agree a lot with what you just said, Robin Agde. Number one, it is a two-way street. When I see residents showing up with video cameras so they can brandstand and put it out on social media, you know that the respect thing isn't worked in both ways over here. Whatever, and I've been preaching equality since the beginning. So whatever rules we have that, and I think Glenn Gunn said this the other week, that as a, um, elected official, we're supposed to take a certain amount of, I'll clean this up, garbage, okay? No, we're not. Somebody in the charter board says that. Doesn't say that anywhere. Um, I'm not taking garbage from anybody, and I won't get it back either, all right? So if, the bottom line is, whatever we allow residents to do is what we're going to allow for each other. It's going to be equal, because this is a limited public forum. We can make the rules in here. Fred Riley can tell you all about limited public forums. I read a sixty-page dissertation on one the other day. We can make rules, as long as we make them equally. But, but, yet, we don't do that sometimes. Um, we allow residents to speak about lawsuits, but we don't allow ourselves to speak about it? That's a problem. That's a big problem. Um, so we need to kind of clean that up. In terms of the rigidity of the meetings, I, I love the, the work sessions. They are looser, and it's for the reason you just said. We're discussing stuff here tonight. In a council session, we have to come to a vote, and you have to stand on your vote, okay? As for the presiding officer vote, that was never subject to charter amendment, and absolutely zero way that the charter officer, that the, uh, presiding officer in this situation is not going to vote. That's in our charter, and that goes with the mayor's position or whoever's chair of this meeting. So that's a non-starter as far as I'm concerned. Um, in terms of relaxing the rules, we have been given authorization by the, overwhelmingly by the citizens, and thank you, that's what the charter committee wanted, to relax our rules if necessary. When you start putting in discussion in Robert's Rules of Order, just discussion only, we've done this already, folks. All, it was traffic calming, remember? We talked for an hour and a half on traffic calming one night, and I will never forget. Jody Shirley looked at me and she said, what do we do? We're at the end of discussion. And I looked at her, and I said, we can't do anything. And she was frustrated, and I was frustrated, and the citizens were throwing up their hands. We spoke for an hour and a half. This is the night when we talk. This is, if it was Congress, this is the committee, if you will. And if you get it past the committee and everybody likes what you have to say, you get it to the floor, and that's where we vote on it. In terms of how we take the votes, it doesn't matter. Um, I think that you should go on record with your vote. I don't think it takes that long for Patty to call her own, we have seven people, but to do it with unanimity, that's fine. I mean, it's not a problem, if, if that's what we decide. All I'm going to ask is that whatever rules we make, that we codify these rules, that we have something that any presiding officer, if I'm out, or anyone else, or the next presiding officer, be able to read it and know exactly what is expected. We can loosen it up as loose as you want. I've spoken to commissioners in other cities who went fistfights with each other. You can loosen it up all you want, the sheriff had to step in. That's what, not what we're about. So I'd rather we not loosen it up that much, okay? I think we have a decent amount of decorum. I don't think it has to be more rigid, but we're not here to take nonsense, and we're not here to give it back, okay? And it's, and it doesn't start any discussion off well when people start that way. So that's all I have to say. Um, I'll turn it over to the other side of the room then. So, no doubt, David?
No, I, I did, I, I spoke my piece on this topic at our last meeting, and, uh, you know, I, I think this is as good as it gets for this council. And, uh, I know it's been much, much worse at times, and... much worse at times. And certainly, I am not opposed to having two work sessions during the month. If that's what it takes to get it done, and maybe if we didn't wait so long after a regular council meeting, it would still be a hot talk in our brains. I just don't have anything else to say about it.
To that point, I mean, there are other cities that have two work sessions. I don't agree with having them be four our council meetings because our council meetings go on for quite a while. And I know it presents problems for at least two or three people here. You know, I can get here at 5:00, but that does not make it easy for, I know, two or three individuals on this council, and that's a real difficult floor. So I don't want to see it starting earlier. But if we have to have two of them, or if there's ever anything that's so important, I mean, I can call it, as the mayor, I'm allowed to call it on, I can call one on with no note, with basically limited notice, I can call it tonight. So if there is a point that somebody really wants, and they're dying, that it can't wait to the next week, let me know during the work, during the council session, and we'll call a special session. I mean, I can do it right while we're here. And it saves everybody from having to get two or three people together, which then you get into sunshine issues and everything else. So if it's that important to you, we can hold one. I mean, it's not a problem. So. Anyone else?
Councilmember Bean.
Yes. Councilmember Marv Bean?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear everything, but just a comment. As far as the work sessions, I think we've done a great job with this council with all the work sessions and the dialogue. And I know there's some cases where it came to a decision that we had to kick it back. And I think that's from literally thinking about what the work, what we did at the work session and rethink before we make a vote on anything. And I don't mind the dialogue. I think it's good. We've got seven people up there that you can definitely say everybody's thinking about what's going on and making the best possible decision they can make at the time. If we have to work it around another month, I know it takes long. And it's unfortunate that the residents can't be at every meeting. But on the other hand, if they haven't that much interest to complain about something that goes on at the council meetings, then it behooves them to come to the work sessions as well, or at least call one of us or talk to one of us or email us and ask us questions about what went on. So they can get the answers they need. I like what we're doing. You know, I don't want to slow things down by all means. Sometimes it is. But I think we're doing a good job doing what we're doing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Marv. Anyone else for a first time?
Yes. I would like to say, first off, Vice Mayor Glenn Glenn, I appreciate all the work that you put into this and your thoughts and your explanation of it. Great job. I also agree with all of that. And with Councilmember Dr. Aki's comment about stating your point and moving forward, I agree with that as well. Things go into, for lack of better word, rambling on and on and on. And it has nothing to do with what we're supposed to be deciding. And we spend hours talking about stuff, which we can resolve our entire meetings, I feel like, as small as this city is, and with no, none of the big issues that other cities have, we should have a city council meeting, hour, hour and a half long, in my opinion. I've seen city council meetings that go that long and accomplish a heck of a lot. So I just wanted to state that. During the city council meeting, you spent roughly 25 minutes just discussing on whether to remove it from the agenda, when it could have been just left on the agenda and discussed at that point because you spent 25 minutes just discussing on whether to move it or not. So I just think that we should stick with agenda items. Each one of us state our opinion, where we stand at on it, and go for votes. And that's how I feel about it.
I, oh, Jody, did you want to talk?
Yeah, Jody.
I thought you were going to.
Yeah, yeah. One more comment when you're done.
Okay, we're going to Jody first. No, we're coming around for the second go around. Robin was up, and then you're next.
Okay, cool. Yeah.
Maryup.
Glenn, thank you for all your work. I appreciate your input. As always, you've provided us a lot of information at Food For Thought, things to think about, how to make the meetings more efficient. You know, I think that there are, there are some efficiencies we can get out of this. I agree with things Rita said and trying to stay on task and get your point across quickly and no need to dwell on conversation. Just a quick decision. If we all ran our lives like this, nothing would get done. You know, and I just go back to residents emailing us and that sort of thing. I always reply to residents' emails and often hear that no one else does. So just a thought is that if you get an email, it'd be nice even just to say, hey, I received your email. Because that makes it, it goes a long way with a resident. They think that it's falling on deaf ears, which is why they come to the meeting upset and maybe right being as, you know, as Marv mentioned. But I don't think they all come with grievances, maybe just with opinions. And it's good to hear those opinions. That's our job. But Glenn, thank you. And it definitely gives me food for thought. I think we do need to think about how we preside over the meetings and make it a more friendly environment for our residents and fellow council members and staff.
Back to Robin.
No, I agree with Jody completely about we need to make everything more friendly. I mean, at the end of the day, our best interests are for the city, whether I agree with you or not. My bottom line is, I'm giving you my opinion best on what I think is for the city, and I expect that that's what your opinion is for. I think in our council, our meetings go along because we address a heck of a lot more topics since I've been on council than previous councils. So I think that we could use some of this to kind of structure it down. And I think that in the past, if we've had an item on the regular council that is up for discussion, like that one and a half hour, I mean, we take the opportunity to do it, even if it's not productive. So part of me is kind of confused about this item. This seems kind of redundant to me because I think we already do talk discussion items even when there isn't a vote on them. So that's it.
I think it was Glenn that was asking to speak or Marv? I'm not sure.
It was Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Glenn.
Yeah, just one last point to consolidate Dr. Google for some of the other members in the room there. Is if you go in and you look at it, I mean, there are some very distinctive best practices for presiding officers. And I think the point that's being missed here, and I'm all for efficiency, and I'm not advocating that we have to have more than two meetings per month, as much as there are ways to clean up and optimize the time that we are alive and stuff. But what I want to underscore here is the role of the presiding officer. And I think part of the reason why some of these formal council meetings are getting off track and causing such a huge stress level in this thing is because the work session is the place for the mayor to provide his leadership role and his vision of where he wants to take the city. The formal council session is a place where he puts on his presiding officer hat and manages the protocol of the meeting. Doesn't lecture, doesn't try to persuade, doesn't try to boot the vote or say who's right or who's wrong. Preside of the meeting and take your vote. That's all I'm trying to say is, that's the distinction. And that's the conundrum here. The mayor must provide a vision and a leadership for this city. But the place for that is the work session. And my subjective opinion is that at the formal council session, his role and responsibility is as the presiding officer, let the body do the debate and make the decision. That's, that's his role at that point. That's all I have. Thank you.
Other than your citation, is there any citation in our charter to that? Because if you're going to look at the presiding officer's role when you're talking to House of Representatives or the Senate, that's a different thing than what we have going here. There is not another council in this county where the presiding officer does not participate unless it's a strong mayor. And if you want to go to a strong mayor, that's wonderful. You can do it when I'm no longer mayor because I'm not interested in it. But you're trying to basically advocate that the mayor has no voice. That's against our charter. That's against the way we run things here. And if you're going to do it, please start with the next mayor and not with this one because I am not going to go for that. No way. No way. That is not in our charter. And that's not what the presiding officer's role is. Up until last Tuesday, this, the mayor in this city, didn't even get a right to bring a motion. But the mayor can participate in every discussion. And if we're going to let the city manager, who is a non-voting member, participate in every discussion, you're not going to stop the mayor from speaking. And I'm not speaking for me. I'm speaking for the next mayor, and the next mayor, and every mayor that's come before me. This has never been the rule. So I don't know where this is coming from. I think I know why it's going. But I'm not going to get into what reasons. It's unacceptable. That's against our charter. And as far as I'm concerned, it's a nonstarter. So I think it would be against the charter, quite frankly. So.
One last comment?
Yeah, Robin wanted to speak, so we're actually, hang on, we're on the second go round. Let me look to the other side of the room, and then we'll go back for thirds. There's no hands.
No, just to address that again, I guess I'm confused because, again, like you said, the charter. Because in that case, what you're saying is that every single item that is on the regular should be first on the work session so the mayor has a chance to discuss the options. And then when you come to a meeting, he doesn't discuss and he just presides. So I think that would be counterintuitive. And second of all, if you just want somebody to preside, then you would just have to have someone like Lynn just say, okay, next motion, do this, do that, and then let the mayor be a discusser. And since we are a council-driven on our charter, not a strong mayor or strong council, whatever the term is, I mean, he has an equal vote. And it has nothing to do with personalities. I mean, whoever ran for mayor next, I'm just talking in charter. I just, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that.
Back to Glenn Glenn.
My, my observation and subjective opinion is that this is a situational recommendation. I'm taking a look at past experience in our meetings and kind of extrapolating from there. And some of it is personality-driven. And what I'm trying to do is make the recommendation to facilitate future meetings. And I think everybody has a certain leadership style. And I think every council has a different composition in how it's going to react to that. And I'm purely making a observation and a suggestion that, given the present situation, I'm just making some recommendations. And I think we need to start thinking about this anyway because the Charter amendment says that in order to take part in the debate, you're going to have to pass the gavel. And if you look at Robert's Rules and the guideline for that, if anybody who wants to participate in the debate typically doesn't take the gavel. So if you have a body of only seven council members and you want to make a debate and nobody wants to take the gavel, where do we go?
I'll suggest you go back and re-review the thing that the voters approved, 1,000 to 200 last week. And it does not say to take part in the debate. It says when the mayor wants to move something. Okay? I'm looking at the charter now. And the way it used to be written is the mayor shall, the mayor shall vote on all matters as a regular member of council that shall not move or second a motion. And that was what was just changed. Okay? So now, I agree with you. If I decide to make, or not me, any presiding officer decides to make a motion, the gavel must be passed. And we agree with that as Charter, on the Charter Committee, that we pass the gavel. And because it's not fair if you're the motion bringer, even though, you know, it happens, that you're the motion bringer, that you can't control the discussion. But it doesn't mean you can participate in the discussion. Fred Riley.
Section 2-62B of the city code addresses this issue. So let me read that. The presiding officer or other such council member as may be presiding shall not move or second an issue, but may enter into debate from the chair, subject only to limitations of debate as are imposed by this section on all council members, all council members. The presiding officer shall not be deprived of any of the rights or privileges of a council member by reason of his acting as the presiding officer. That's the current rule that's in the code. So if the council, now that the Charter amendment has been passed, if the council wants to further modify the rules in some respect, then that's, that's something you can do by making a change to the ordinance. But that is the rule as it currently stands. If I may make a couple other comments. The, one of the things that I think is pretty basic to understand, but oftentimes, it should be said anyway, is that the rules are there to ensure procedural due process. And if, if the rule says you should do A, B, and C, and you do A and B but don't do C, then there's a question as to whether you've given due process. So there's, there should always be concern about what are the rules and are we following the rules as, as they're written in good faith. At this point, when this was discussed at the city commission or council meeting a couple weeks ago, I thought, a question was raised as to whether this was premature to discuss. And I, at that time, I thought it was because you didn't yet know what the vote was going to be on the Charter amendment. Now you know what the vote is, and you know that if you as a council want to change the rules, which are contained in the code, to make them less rigid in some way, then you're, you're able to do that. And this is, to me, the starting point of considering those types of things. I'll make one more comment about the, the presiding officer is that I've said in the past that you have a second, a group of rules, and in my opinion, the rules are pretty rigid. The one that you mentioned, Mayor, about the city council can't discuss prospective or current litigation, is I've had to several times advise the council that that is your rule, and my advice is follow your rule. There's a good reason why that rule is in, actually written, is it's so that you, you as a council, while something is potentially pending as a litigation item, you're not here discussing it and running the risk of making an admission against interest in some way. So that, that's the policy reason to have the rule in effect. The anomaly that's present in that one is that the citizens can bring that up, and there's no rule that prevents them from raising it as an issue. And, you know, as much as I'd like to tell you, there shouldn't be anomalies, I'm afraid to tell you, there occasionally, there are going to be, and you have to work through them as best you can.
And to that point, it's more than anomaly. You and I had a discussion on this. It's a constitutional problem. Okay? You're allowing, in a limited public forum, citizens to speak. And what really concerns me is so much current litigation. Because current litigation, you can do in the shade. Florida makes a, a special provision for that. You can call a shade meeting if the council wishes to discuss current litigation. But prospective litigation, Florida actually, and I'm not going to discuss any cases, but Florida gives you six months as a council, and you have to give six months' notice on a tort claim. And the reason why Florida gives you that is so that your council and your attorneys can get together and say, should we settle this thing? Should we get rid of it? Should we fight it? We can't talk about it. So do you realize if someone brings a notice of lawsuit, you're almost guaranteed? Because you can't settle it without going public, you're guaranteeing that it's going to a trial or to an actual lawsuit, when you might be able to nip it in the bud. So that's a bad law. I said this before. That one, I'm going to bring a motion to change that one. We either take it all out, all the discussion out, or we allow anyone to talk about it for the prospective litigation. Current litigation, Florida protects. But Florida doesn't think anything about prospective litigation. That's not subject to shade. So we have to be mindful that if you're going to allow the citizens to come in and start saying stuff in terms of making personal accusations against people on council, and council can't answer it, you're really denying someone their right of speech. And to your point of procedural due process, if you take away the presiding officer's right to speak in the middle of a term, you're going to have a problem. I'll leave it at that. Okay? You can do that at the beginning of the term, when you say that, okay, as presiding officer, you're no longer going to be allowed to speak. But if you're going to take away that in the middle- But if you're going to take away that in the middle of the term, I think you're going down a very dangerous road. Want to speak?
Can I say something with regards to?
Sure.
All these issues we're discussing right now are code-related. We're about to pull up a code review board. I think that that's the appropriate place and time to discuss it. This, I mean, this is not going anywhere tonight. There's, we're getting off track, talking about lawsuits and things that aren't necessarily on point to this conversation. So, my, my perspective is, it's a code issue, something that can be addressed by code review, and should be handled with that board.
I'll respectfully disagree. I don't think the code handles our meetings. I mean, they can, they can certainly talk about city ordinances and things, but when it comes to how we should conduct a meeting, I think that's council's decision. I don't think it's planning boards.
Well, I think when you spool up a committee like this, you're going to have people on it, from the council on that committee, and we're reviewing for, a code, it's a code review. If it's a code question, then those questions or recommendations get brought back to council, and council can make a decision. You know, it's just, they're, they're not doing anything. They're not making decisions. If it's an issue, if we see it as an issue, and it's something that needs to be discussed, they can discuss it and bring us back a recommendation.
It can be added if you wish. Yes, Fred?
I only use that as an example, and now I regret using that as the example. But it was something in, in the recent past, I-
Well, it clarified something for me, so thank you.
Well, I hope it was helpful. That's why I say a lot of things, really, when it gets down to it. But the, the starting point is where you're at now. If y'all want to discuss and consider changes to the code, then you can do that. And if it's too rigid, and you want to do things to make it less rigid, present language, and then we'll put it in form, and then it can be debated and go forward. That, that's what should happen, if y'all want to make, make some changes. To your point, I wasn't advocating undermining the, what's in the code now about the presiding officer.
I'm insane, dude. I'm just saying, that's not a good idea. That's being advocated.
To my knowledge, hearing what everyone had to say, I, I don't think that's what the direction you ought to go. I mean, it's, you have, the presiding officer is a city council member, and has the same rights and obligation to debate, and to give their, their opinion on anything that comes before the council. That's, that's a fundamental point, as far as I'm concerned.
Fred, I do have a question for you, though. In light of the charter amendments they all passed, okay? Procedurally, for what past, not what we may want to change, what past, what do we need to do now to bring our official published charter, if I'm saying this correctly, into compliance? And any else, any conflicts? For example, conflicts between the ordinances and the charter? I think we may have a few now. What do we have to do so that we can actually implement that? We've been given the mandate, so what do we do?
Well, the next step, I've discussed that with Patty and with Lynn. The next step is when you meet, in the first meeting in December, there will be a resolution where the council authorizes the clerk to submit the text of the changes to the immunity code, so they can implement them. And once that's been done, to send it on to the Secretary of State, which is the procedure that should be followed. In talking to Patty today, she checked on the certification, and it's my understanding that the certification has now been obtained. So up until she got that, she couldn't go forward with those steps, but she's poised to do so at this time. And since, based on what the language of the charter, the city council should take another step, which is what you will do by resolution at the first meeting in December.
Now, last question, and I just dropped a note on this, just to consider. The second phase of our charter, we had several charter suggestions, and the second one is due on the ballot for March of 2021. I remember last time, we had about a three-month window that you had to have the questions in, in advance, in Spanish and everything, fully approved. Do you know, does anybody know what the window is? And it seems to be like December might be the due date, so I'm just wondering.
We discussed that today at length, too, and Patty checked on that. The deadline for the ballot language is 12:30, 1:20. So, if you do want to go ahead with any amendment, charter amendment for the next election, you would have to take action on that pretty quickly.
I believe all the group, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone who was on council, I knew on the, I think it was all the group two and some of the group three items come in. I think that's what we all decided. That was the recommendation of the charter committee. Jody's not a yes, and I think everybody, unless I remember it wrong.
One more comment, Patty, when I get a chance.
Okay. One second.
Does one want to speak?
Pardon?
Does one want to speak?
Yes, one more comment, if I get a chance.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, well, what I'd like to say is, the only opportunities we have to talk about these sorts of things are really in a work session. If, if I had the opportunity, I'd love to talk about some of this stuff over a beer. That's not going to happen, because we have some limitations on how we can interact. So, what I'm trying to get across here is a personal observation, and I want to see this council succeed. I want to see how Mayor succeed. He's got a vision, he, he's got a direction he wants to take us in, and I'm trying to give him some feedback on what I think isn't working, and how to make things work better. The answer and solution isn't always to jump to an ordinance, always to jump to a resolution, always to jump to a charter amendment. It's to listen to some of the feedback, take stock, and think about it. And that's what I'm trying to do here tonight, is provide some food for thought for everybody on, on how we're doing business, what's working, and what I don't think is working, and maybe how to improve the process. So, that, that's all I've got. That's my last comment on this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Fred, back to the point, though, on the charter for this, everybody, I think, is in agreement. And again, somebody speak up if I got this wrong. I was under the impression that the second phase of questions were supposed to go on for this next March election, 2021, and the third phase, supposed to go on, final phase, is March 2022. The less, you know, we prioritize these things, and the second group is, I can't remember that, if I'm not mistaken, so.
If that is the intention of the council, then we will put that together, phase two, and we will have to put it in ordinance form, and have it to you for the first meeting in December, and you'll have to have a second workshop to, or a second council, special councilman meeting to approve it the second time.
Council, we can't vote on this, but do we have consensus on that, that we can get Fred doing this? I think it's all in the charter committee's report, in terms of what the second group is and everything. So, I mean, if there's any confusion, we can come back to the report, but you don't have a lot of time, unfortunately, because we have to get to the first meeting in December, and then it goes automatic. But does anybody have a different understanding? No comments? So, Mr. Riley, if you'll go ahead with the group two of the amendments, of the charter amendments for consideration.
And I'll lean heavily on my good friend Patty, Jim, for your help.
Can I propose something, just because the, our meeting is not until December 7th? Could we have a special meeting on November 30th to review? There's charter amendments, so we can have a final reading on the 7th and be done for it.
Okay, is that?
That's, the 30th is the last Monday in November.
Is anybody, well, let me ask Mr. Riley. It's, for my standpoint, I could call it right now, based on that recommendation, but does that give you enough time to pull this all together? Or do you need that little extra time? Because, I mean, we could have one on the 7th, and we could have one on the, I don't know, the 10th, or something like that, too.
Yeah, we could.
Yep. I just don't know, you know, this takes a while. I respect-
I just want to pile them on top of the other, and I'll do it, yeah.
Well, I'm told that Patty will not be here on the 30th.
Oh, then that's out of question.
But we can have two back-to-back, very close, right? We're not limited as to how close we can have Patty or Lynn. Nope, right? So, I don't know if we have a December work session. I think we may skip that, but if we do have a December work, we can have a short one, you know? This is an easy one. The second read is going to be, if it passes the first time, it should all pass the second time.
Yeah, typically, well, we haven't, we haven't had a December work session for a long time. But, you know, doing a second special, we should be able to do that. You know, if everything's good with the first read on December 7th, and there's no issues, then we'd just be reading the same thing twice. We do have to advertise it, though, the second read, so.
So maybe we do it like Monday or Wednesday or something?
The next Monday, it's 14th.
Patty, what's, it may have to be the next week.
14th, maybe, the 7th and the 14th, maybe.
Yeah, because she has to advertise the second read, if it has any-
Well, there has to be that much space in between.
Fred, I don't think there were as many, either on the second one. I think they're smaller, they're not as detailed, so, as I remember it, I just don't think we had as many, but, you know, it was months ago that we did this, but I think there was a lot less, so.
That's fine. We'll get more in order tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Does that conclude this issue? So we've got some food for thought, appreciate the comments, and we'll, we'll take it from there and move on to the next item. Good? It's 7:40. Is everybody okay to go to the next item? The next item's going to be a discussion of short-term rentals.
I just make a suggestion. I know some of the residents are here, and it looks like they're here for specific items. I don't know if those items are at the bottom. I don't know if we, can we move them?
Yeah, we, we don't, we're not set to a formal agenda, does any, I think-
You're the last two standing.
I love Bill Lusk, he's holding out. Bill Lusk left, I'm sure he was on the marina. Did you want to speak?
Is there an issue you're here specifically for?
I'm here for the digital sign.
Signage?
Yes, so that moves towards the bottom. Can we move it up, just for their sake? Do you guys are okay with that? I just, I'm fine with that. I just feel bad that they're here.
I'm interested, we should see the other.
Well, you're more than welcome to stay, too, but this way you can decide, go, you're not missing out on your issue.
So, we'll move up.
Number six?
Number six, discussion review of city, city community center's sign, design, concept. We'll move that up to, well, move that up to the number 2.5. How's that? Nobody objects? Okay, so item 2.5, discussion and review of city community center's sign, design, concept. Lynn, I'm going to put this on the agenda for tonight.
Right. What I've provided you is three different concepts. They can be a letterboard, or they can be digital. But what I need from the council is some consensus on what you want the sign to look at, look like. Then we will put out to bid that sign with the letterboard with an option to make it like mine, so you see both the prices. But what I've given you, there's, this, this sign here is more a monument sign. They'll all be V-shaped. If you look at the second page, there shows a diagram with the V-shaped sign. Because that was one of the issues that people continue to say they can't read the sign. There's, there's two versions of the sign, basically, with letters and digital. So, what I need from you really is feedback on where you're at with what you feel is the best selection.
And I have a question for you. I mean, you know, to me, there's one, and this is, I'm not going to tell you which one, but there's one to here that just jumped out at me. It was really sharp-looking, not blah. And I'm going, oh my God, do you have any idea what that's going to cost in relation to the other ones? Do you have any idea, price-wise, that, you know, because it's nice to say, yeah, I want the real fancy one, but, you know, if that's going to cost 10 times more, the answer's going to be no.
Well, the problem is, the designer gave us concepts. He, he doesn't give us, you know, we know that putting digital on what existed out here was going to cost us about $20,000. And I would think that if it was digital, that $20,000's still there, but it's probably another 15 to 20 for the basic sign, because you want it in V shape. But until we pick something, we aren't going to have a good grip on the price. And that's kind of where it's at right now.
Is it possible to bid?
I'm going to say that if you look at this one, that's eight by 10, versus this one, that's 16 by nine and a half. You're probably looking at twice the price.
I like the one that's 16 by 10.
Me, too, but I'm going to the trash cans. I'm sure it's a lot more money.
Why can't we bid two of them? I mean, you know, to Jody's point, she's right. That other one, that second one is, to me, a lot more.
Say this one?
Yeah, you just look at the area of the sign, and then you've got the little detail on-
Well, the digital portion of the sign on all of them is, is, if it's digital or letterboard, it's going to be the same.
Right, but I'm saying the sign size, you're going to have to pay that.
It's, it's a lot more, and yes, it's going to cost a little more money, but, you know, but what I'm trying to get from the council, there's three concepts that we went to a designer to ask him to give us. He actually gave us four, but we didn't give you that one, because it had an umbrella on it.
No, they're only banned across the street. We can use them.
Yeah, I've had a little umbrella right here.
That's awesome.
And I said, what are you doing?
Can I ask a question right quick, Lynn? Yes. Okay, the thing that I noticed about the digital signs, every one of them is the same sign, which means it's a full-color Mac Daddy. And, I mean-
Well, I gave you some other pictures of Reddington's digital sign. They're in, they're in a small-
It's not, it's not the size, it's the colors. It's, it's having full-color digital display board. I believe that's where it's really expensive all of a sudden.
Well, no. That, that digital sign that we were going to put on that, you could have done this, but we were, but the price was still the same. It was $20,000. It's just, what the council talked about originally was, they didn't want all this color. They wanted red, or white, or whatever.
Right. Andy, I'd like to be recognized when you get a chance.
And I'm talking according to the-
Okay, thank you.
The, the sign company, that's what they told us.
So there's no single-color sign available?
This is what he showed us. You can, you control the colors in that sign.
I get that, I get that. But you see what I'm saying? Is that you ask for a sign, and then you get these on. You get one that's pretty much a sharpened-down version of what you see the football sign. It's full color, you can do anything you want with it, and I don't, I'm wondering if that's what, why it's $20,000. Is it, does it have to be $20,000, or could it be something much cheaper, and that is a, it looks like this, and, and is, that's still a full-color sign, but they just haven't turned the colors on for those words.
Right.
And so, that, that's my question, is, are we, I don't think they've given us all the options.
Well, when you go out to bid, because really what I'm looking for from you right now is the concept. I'm not looking for what this is going to be, or is it going to be a letterboard? All I'm asking you is-
Monument.
What do you want sign-wise? And then, we will give the option for them to give us this. This would be the base, and with an option to do something else. That's what, that's what we would ask them for in the bid document.
I want this for the price of this.
Me, too.
Which one, which one are you showing us?
Actually, I don't want the digital sign. I want this for the price of this.
I think what Dave was pretty much asking is, can we get the price options for the black-and-white screen TV versus the color screen TV, kind of like the two?
No, we'll just make it as an option, that's all I'm saying. I just want you to pick the sign.
Right, and that's fine, because, I mean, I, I agree. This- Right, and that's fine, because I mean, I, I agree, this is quite in-your-face, a little too extreme for Bel Air Beach, and I think our neighbors would be very upset with this. So, I mean, if we could do an option for a subtle digital sign, I'm hoping, and we're gonna hear from the residents, it would be a little bit nicer.
That's why he gave you this.
Right, because if it's just black with yellow, and it's not blinking and...
So, you know, it's, it's the differ, you know, I could say to him, all we want is, uh, I would say probably color-wise, you know, a red or something that's, at least shows some vision, and I, I think we can ask him.
Here, that's our guy, Glenn.
Okay, thank you.
Glenn, Glenn wanted to speak, I believe, and I don't know about Marv, but we're coming around that way, so if anybody on the phone, let's go with Glenn first, and then Marv, if he wishes to speak.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I would just like to echo Dave Gaddis' sentiments. My, my feeling is, we've asked for a lock, and that's what came back, rather than doing a acquisition by requirements. I mean, we're just given a handful of, uh, pictures, rather than starting off with what is it that the city wants? What's the minimum, maximum size, how bright, what colors, not to be exclusive, what's the field of view, that sort of thing, and then come back with some, some, uh, options, but start with the requirements, rather than just going to a contractor and say, hey, we want a lock. And that's, I, I, maybe I don't have the full package here, but I'm just kinda looking at what I printed out for the town of Reddington Shores, and I, I've got to say, none of that's really appealing to me. I would rather sit back and take stock of some of these other things. I mean, a lot of, uh, other communities deal with this thing, and have ordinance areas about this, and we should probably go out and take a look at some of the best practices that benchmark some of this stuff. That, that's all I have.
So, I, I guess my question is, where is the console with... What I've heard so far is, this is the basic sign that you have more interest in.
Right, but this one's probably financially more...
Why can't you give us prices for two of them? I, I, I'm with Jody, I, I think, you know, we, we all, well, I shouldn't say we all, at least two of us, or three of us, want that real fancy one with a nice top on it. It really looks nice, it's contemporary, our building is still contemporary-looking, it's, it's the largest building.
Well, it's not gonna hurt us to go say, okay, I, I want the cost for this with these two options.
Okay.
Or three, if, if we wanna say, we want the, the leaderboard, or we want just black and white, or we want color, I mean, that, that's pixels that they would come back to.
To Jody's point, that's other one is, is much larger, so if you can shrink that a little bit, I mean, I, it's nice that we got these gigantic letters that say "Community Center", but, you know, maybe we can somehow get this nice fancy one that everybody seems to like, shrink it down a bit, you know?
Right, and so that's what I'm trying to get from the console, the consensus on, this is the design that I should go back and start?
I like this look. Design, no, I, I, I don't know, are we a community center, or are we City Hall, or are...
Oh, it's a, it's called Community Center.
Does it need to be on there?
No, it doesn't need to be on there.
And then, you know, it seems to me you could have F-digital.
Wait a minute, it, it did have Community Center on the other one.
Okay, well, if digital is the way we're going, why can't we just do a little, small digital read, rather than having a ginormous digital board that ha, you know, that kinda just feeds through information if we're gonna have anything digital? I'm not in support of digital, I don't think we should have anything digital, I think we should continue with a small informational board out there. This sign could be half the size it is, and still have the look, so I, you know, and I think those... But you can't take a guy way down the road without, you know, you've gotta get some pricing, and how many designs are we gonna have this guy do? So I, you know, and then send his design out to everyone else in town. So, there's gotta be some respect from that perspective, too.
Right, yeah, yeah, they, they gave us three, that's what we paid for. You know, we can go back and say, hey, I want you to, if, if this is the concept you have interest in, then I'll go back to him and say, okay, we wanna shrink it a little bit. Do you not want the Community Center on there? Do you want the Community Center? Does it matter?
I'm in favor of getting a price on that one. Um, I don't really feel like we needed the word "Community Center" on there, but we did have it on the other one, and some people that, you know, move into town and stuff, may not know this is actually the Community Center building. A lot of them don't, so I'm, I'm leaning more towards leaving it on there. I would like this sign shrunk, it is pretty big, it's gonna...
Yeah, he, he just gave us some concepts, so we've got a starting point. Because I didn't really have a starting point, no consensus from the console on, you know, what you really wanted, unless we just replace the same old, same sign we had.
I think Marv wanted to speak, and then we'll, we'll get a quick polling here, and Lynn, I just wanna be clear, Jody said it, I'm gonna echo it. I'm not in favor of digital either. I wanna see prices for both of them, fair prices, um, because unless somebody convinces me otherwise, I'd, I'd like our, to keep that, and I guess it's a question ultimately for Fred. My feeling is probably, again, equality, okay, whatever we do in City Hall, you know, we're gonna have a condo or motel asking us for that same kinda sign outside their front door, and I don't know how we're gonna say no if we have some big, thin, like, well, fence or Reddington Shores, but something like that.
Well, I, I, we don't have an ordinance that would prevent that right now.
Right.
I can tell you...
When they see it, then they like it.
No, they can do it right now, would, would just do it, as long as they met the county building code.
Councilmember Bean?
Uh, yes, as far as the signs, uh, I think the one at the angle top fits our building. Uh, Community Center, yeah. How about just Bel Air Beach across there, and the logo above it? But as far as the digital sign, I think they're important. Things that come up, such as hurricanes, or flooding, or broken water line, that could be in red, maybe as a warning, uh, you know, sandbags available, et cetera. And then normal messaging would just be black and white, or gray and white, or whatever you might wanna say, but I think the option to have the color in there may be important, depending on the severity of whatever happens. That's all. Thank you.
Let's go to the citizens, I, that's why we moved this up, so I, I know you're, um, you're in close proximity to this sign. I'm gonna ask till it's on the mic, so everybody can hear you, if you'll just come and speak up here at the podium.
I will say that Councilwoman Shirley does respond in December, and I thank you for that. I think it's important for the citizens to hear back. I apologize for getting information too late tonight, but, um, that's all the time I had to put it together. We live across...
Excuse me, I don't wanna interrupt, can you just put your name on there?
Oh, yes, I'm Jenny Mall, this is my husband Roger, and we live at 115 Cosway, which is across the street here. We're on the west side of the pond, and we are very much against any form of digital sign going in, as are a number of our neighbors. So, um, I just wanted to bring that to you all's attention, and, um, in the information that I emailed all the council members, uh, tonight, I have the same concerns that you did, Mayor, about if we allow it, um, here, then I, the hotel, all those are going to have, to mark digital signs as well, and I didn't know...
Ms. Mall, can you please speak right in, because Marv just heard Marv say he can't hear you.
About that, it's not better. I usually have a pretty loud voice.
Lights only pick up from like two inches away, so if you can get as close as possible.
I did not realize that we don't have an ordinance banning digital signs, so I would encourage the city council to pursue that, because I can see that coming. I, in, in the information that I sent you all, I, I, I know y'all can read, so you probably don't need me to read this all to you, but some things that I think we need to consider, are that, um, the maintenance of it. When those things go out, they are a blight. And so, who is gonna take care of that sign on the weekends when it goes out? On a holiday weekend, for instance? Who's gonna do that? And I'm really even against black and white, because who's to say that in a year or two or three, we might wanna change it to color? We have a lot of windows that face this, and we're gonna have that sign blasting into our windows, let alone the people across the pond from us, and then, um, the people directly behind the pond. So, we have enough light here, just with this building and all the exterior lighting. You have to remember that, um, parking lights, they shine down, these signs shine out. So they're not, they're not just a blight to us, they also, uh, have effect even on the birds that migrate to our pond here. So we need to, I think, be concerned about that issue as well. Another huge issue, I think, is, um, the traffic disturbance the digital signs cause. And I know that, um, when I was at the parking, um, rep, uh, at the park board meeting, one of the things that was discussed was, you know, ways to get information out to residents, and that this digital sign would be helpful, because people would see it, and, you know, I think Lynn, you were saying, you know, make it big enough so people can see it. Well, it distracts drivers to the, you can't, I mean, if it's gonna attract attention, it's gonna distract the driver. And honestly, I live on Causeway Boulevard, the last thing we need on Causeway Boulevard is just more distraction for our drivers there. All the people who live on Causeway, and who live on these side streets here, we all have issues with people not paying attention. We are signaling to turn into our driveways, or to turn onto our streets. I cannot tell you how many times we've almost been rear-ended. So, to have a sign directly across the street distracting them, I think is a huge issue that we should take under consideration. The other, let's see, um, I know that we're looking at, I think, signs you said in Reddington Shores, I, I really would hate to compare our city to Reddington Shores. We're not Reddington Shores, so I don't think we, that's something we really wanna emulate there. I think we need to think about that as well. I did call, um, Bel Air Plus, Bel Air and Indian Rock Beach, and I, as you all know, they are larger cities than we are. They do not have digital signs. And, um, they have many more residents, and their residents are far more active in their cities than our residents are, and they offer far more activities. And so I think if we wanna communicate to our residents, I think this is an old-fashioned way of doing it. I think we have far better technology available these days to communicate with our citizens of putting a digital sign out front. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you for your time, you guys, I really appreciate all your work that you put into this.
Thank you, thank you. Roger, and then Jim. Roger, if you'll just put the name on, your name on the record, too, we know who you are, but...
I'm Roger Mall, I live at 115 Causeway Boulevard, Bel Air Beach, 3376. So, hi, everybody, um, and Lynn, I appreciate all the work you did, because you did exactly what, what they asked you to do. You gave three proposals, and I didn't know this was going on, and I wasn't planning on speaking, but I wanna get right to your point, and actually, her point, uh, about making it quick. But my concern is, is that what is this board for? If we just take a step back and say, do we need another Taj Mahal? Because quite frankly, this place is lit up like the Taj Mahal, for no intense purposes for anybody but somebody's ego. Because we don't have to impress anybody from any other community, we are our own community, so putting up big flashy stuff, I see no purpose in it. What we need is what we had before, is something with placards that very quickly a resident can look at and say, okay, there's a council meeting tonight, or there's a committee. We don't need to spend $10,000 or more on these signs, we can just get them the information the old way, because we don't have to impress anybody else in any other community. And so I would say, and, then if we put up a bunch of lights, I don't know if you've ever seen these in other cities, but they're like, oh, they really look bad. And so if we're trying to make a positive impression, the last thing I would wanna do is to put a color light on there. Now also, if we're doing lights, I can just see the environmental committee going, why do they have all this to put up if they've got three meetings during the month? You know, we're, we're looking at, doing some, I think emotionally, it might feel good to have a fancy-looking sign out there, but it serves no purpose for us to, in the community. So, I would vote against it, and so, as a matter of fact, I think I would back off of the color and fancy light thing altogether. But thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
June Vanscoy, 7th Street, Bel Air Beach. I'm here from one of the residents tonight, how, they had flooding this week, and we're thinking, even considering $20,000 on a sign, we have people having flooding on their streets, and we, we were supposed to be taking care of those issues with valves. That's money we could be putting in and fixing our streets. I, I just, I just can't see how we could justify putting $20,000 out when we have all this other stuff to, to maintain. The other thing, too, is, this city has prided itself on not being a commercial kind of city. To put up a flashing sign when we don't have any kind of commercial businesses within our city, I, I just think is, is a waste of time. And, and I think it would be tacky, and, and just would not beautify our city anymore. Yeah, I think it would just go against what this city has basically stood on for so many years, not trying to commercialize it. The other thing, too, is, we keep saying that we want to be a premier city, we want to be a quiet city, then why do we keep trying to buck what we keep saying we want? Okay, we put in parking meters, oh, we don't want people to come in from the outside, but we put in parking meters inviting people to come in. I, I just, I, I, you know, we contradict what we want constantly. And I, I just don't understand the reasoning behind this. I, I just, it, it makes no sense whatsoever. So now we're gonna put in a commercial kind of grade of sign to, so outsiders can see it. I mean, we have, the, I actually say, can say that the city has actually improved their communications as far as putting up announcements on, on the website, and, and letting people know what's going on. I just don't think that $20,000 is feasible for our city in any kind of shape or form. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bring it back to council, and then Lynn, we're gonna give you some kinda vote here, some, so if anybody else has any comments, but if not, I'm gonna, even though it's not a formal vote, it's a consensus vote, but we'll give a consensus.
Yeah, hold on, man, I'll say it one more time.
No, I know what you want, I'm gonna get it for you right now, but does anybody have any comments?
Actually, I do have a comment, and, uh, unfortunately, Lynn, it's not about the shape of the sign, okay? I know everyone is afraid that we're going to have this big flashy red, light, and blue Reddington Shore clone. That is not what I would ever stand behind. If you recall, we had a white backlit board with black letters on it. You can actually get that in digital, the exact same thing, same brightness. And, and our staff doesn't have to go out there and change something in the rain, and, you know, whenever it's hot, or whenever, if something happens on the whim, and they, or we have an emergency, they would not have to do that. But, I guarantee you, there's a, there's a solution out there that will give you what you want, but still give us digital, so that if we need to put in bigger black letters instead of the same size every time with every single message, if we have an emergency going on, we can certainly make it bigger, bolder, you know, change the shape, the font, whatever, to accommodate, to get the message across better, so people can see it as they are, excuse me, as they are, um, getting ready to cross the bridge. As far as the old sign is concerned, yes, the V will help, but I struggle to see it, and I did use that sign every time I crossed the bridge, either direction. I always wanted to know if something was going on that I hadn't heard about yet. So, I, I would not, uh, I, I would recommend not to completely shoot down a digital sign until we actually have something to present to you to look at. Because I, I can assure you, I would vote no on this, okay? Thank you.
Just, just to clarify, the, he wasn't sending us this, he was just giving us examples like, okay, last week, we had a, we had a storm. That sign was changed remotely, it wasn't changed, it could be changed, I could be in, uh, North Carolina and change it. I could be in North Carolina and change it. You know, because it's, that's how it's set up. And that's all he was giving us. He wasn't giving us this. I was just showing you some things. If a hurricane came, oh, you could put that up there. And I wouldn't even have to be here. I could let everybody flood and I'll be somewhere else.
But it's just that the county, they put up their signs that say hurricane. That's what they've done.
No.
About the hearing two years, they put them right up there across, right across the house.
Um, mainly those are for some kind of traffic, but typically they don't. They didn't, they didn't put one up last week. They didn't put one in Hurricane Irma. They didn't do it then. So, you know, I, I don't want, I want you to not miss what, you know, you can do with the other as opposed to the other. But all I'm asking you for tonight is.
I'm going to call the question that we can't call.
Is some consensus on.
Can I ask just a question? Because, you know, like we're looking, if you're looking at that sign where it says community seven block, the base of the sign, could you not do it smaller? Because what I'm seeing on these samples we have are enormous digital signs with a lot of information. If you have something that's small and narrow like this at the base, is that something that's doable? I mean, is that something?
Oh, I'm sure it is. I, you know.
I know we're getting back, I mean, we're getting into some details. But I mean, if we say we want this sign, we want it shrunk down, are we still going to have, it looks like he's put a lot of focus on that digital sign. And I know you can get a much smaller digital sign that will provide you the,
Right.
A place to put information you need.
We can, I think he can take this concept, shrink it down a little bit. Uh, I'm trying to remember what the width of the other one was. I want to say maybe.
If you look at one of those, you know, the smallest one he had, I think was.
Nine feet.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, maybe you can shrink it to, to get the look anyway. Maybe shrink it to 12 feet. You know, it's still, it's still going to go in the same spot. It's not going to change where it's going. You know, whatever we put there, there's going to have to be some light on it anyway. Because you can't read it, you know, after dark if you don't have light on it. So there's going to be light on it regardless. The previous sign was downlit. You know, it was, because it had the little roof on it that looked like this. So what we'll do, we'll go back to the company and say, hey, this is a concept. If this is the concept you want, then we'll go back to him and say, we want to reduce it a little bit. And is there an option to put the A, B, C, D, E type sign with some digital reader board at the bottom of it? I don't know, you know, but we can ask him that.
And to reiterate, we don't, I'm not finishing with this citizen comments now. I'm going to take this to a vote here. The, this is just to get you going. We're not deciding on anything tonight, okay? So I'm going to, this is a non, you know, we can't vote tonight.
No, it's just a consensus on.
Let's see if we can get a consensus, okay? Patty, will you pull the two individuals on the telephone? Okay, so the first choice is the square sign, the square sign. Does anybody in the house want the square sign? Anybody on the phone want the square sign?
Can you hear that? Do you want the square sign?
No, I want the angle top.
Okay, hang on, that's the next vote. Next comes the angle top sign, not the one with the fancy blue thing, the angle top, okay? Anybody in the house here want the angle top? Anybody on the phone want the angle top?
Angle top.
You've got one man for the angle top.
You better clarify what he's.
The angle top is the one that has, it is, the size of it is eight foot wide by 12 feet high, okay? The angle is a slight angle to the right going upward, okay? It's not wavy, it's a little angle. Is that the one you want?
Council member Bean?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so he knew what he wanted. All right, so we got one vote. Which leaves us with the last one. That would be the fancy one with the blue wavy top. Everybody in the house? I'm getting a nod of heads. Everybody wants it in the house? Glenn Gunn? Glenn still with us? You lost Glenn?
No, are you still there? Vice Mayor? Phone line's still open. Maybe stepped away.
Okay, well, we have consensus, okay?
No, I'm sorry, I had the mute button on. I don't have the full package and I will abstain and go with the consensus.
Okay, that's the wavy top one, the blue top, wavy top. Take all the comments you heard tonight, shrink it, lower the letters. As Jody said, make it affordable. Let's put that on.
I have one more question.
Thank you.
Now, now that we've, we've done this, should we, should we establish a budget? Should we?
Let's see what he comes back with and then we might send him back. I mean, if this comes in at $50,000, we're right back to the drawing board again. We'll be.
We're not going to send it out to bid. I'm going to go back to the designer, tell him to shrink it. And I'll try to get, maybe I'll give it to one to just give me a number.
Let's get a ballpark. I mean, they have to know what they're selling.
Because I still have to bid regardless.
So you'll get back to us maybe in a month?
Hopefully sooner.
This could be a follow-up item on one of the, yeah. Folks, go ahead.
Excuse me, I'm going to go ahead and step out and call it tonight. So I'm sorry, I just, I can't sit in this chair anymore.
Okay.
Hope you feel better.
Yeah, it's 8:15. By the way, we're at halftime here. We got to do half of this. Does anybody need a break here? We've got four more items to go. You can take a break at any time, but I'm just going to call if anybody wants it now.
I need a break.
You want a break? Okay, 8:15, 10 minutes, good? 8:25, 8:26, we'll see you back, okay? Okay, we'll make the next again.
I make a suggestion, sorry, another one. Can we move the Marina one to 2.75?
I was just asked that and the answer is, as far as I'm concerned, yes. Anybody have a problem with moving the Marina up? We have Bill Lusk here. He was the author and did a lot of, almost all of the work on that research for us. So I'd like to move this up if we can. So we move item, uh.
Seven.
Seven, up to, um, three, well.
2.75.
2.75. Any objections? There being none, it's, we're moving that up. So item seven, which is now 2.75, discussion of the Marina slip rental rates. And I'll go back to Libree because you put it on here as a follow-up for us.
Yeah, but the presentation that Mr. Lusk made to the council some months ago, I took it to the park and rec board. They discussed it and recommended, the very last page of recommendations. I did throw out another option to them, but at their last meeting, they wanted to stay with this option. Because I looked at the inflation over the last time that rates were raised. It works out, the last time it was raised was 2006. And the inflation over the 14 years would mean that you raise the, today, you raise the Marina rate about a dollar eighty-nine a foot. That's, that would be the inflation rate. But, and I explained that to them. But they still recommended to stay with the proposal that Mr. Lusk and I discussed and he put it in here. So I'm asking the council, this has went around and around and around. You know, where is the council and what do they want to do? Because if we want to adjust them, then I'll, we'll have to get a resolution to put on the next meeting to, to adjust them.
Lynn, before I get count, right after you, I'm going to ask Bill Lusk to come up. Take a little out of order if we're all right with this and have Bill impart us any information or maybe have him up here and then we can ask questions. We have, you know, Lynn and Bill here to get our, any questions answered that will get you a consensus tonight, hopefully. Bill?
Can you do mine doing that in reverse where I can hear what maybe Marina's a gap on? If there's anything I could help with, I can do it after your discussion.
That's fine. I mean, as long as you remember all the questions and.
Thank you.
That's fine, okay. So I'll open it up then to the floor. I had a question. I, I saw the proposal and it seems okay in terms of, you know, it's park board has recommended it now. We have to go through it. And I don't want to do anything. I'm going to say this clearly. I don't want to do anything to affect the existing slip. They've invested a lot of money in this. Some of them have been long-term. But when I look at this, I got 19 slips, one of which is not usable. We've got three that are occupied by non-residents, one by resident, which is probably Mr. Lusk, and 13 by property owners. And the property owners is what jumped out at me. What's, what's the property owner? Are these people that aren't full-time residents of the city?
Well, the, the way the resolution and how they were handling it, Patty can probably speak to that better than I because the, this, the system that was set up, the, the resolution says property owners, okay? Whether you're a resident or non-resident, if you're a taxpayer, you have the opportunity to, and this was in 2006, '07 timeframe. So we need to clean that up so it's not just, if it's property owners, whether you live here or not, that's your rate. All others is something else. And what the suggestion was, was as an example, was to incrementally raise the rates on the current people over a five-year period. But anyone new that came in after whatever date we established it, it would go to the rate that's going to be in existence in five years. So as an example, if you go down to the very last line on the very last page of the blue sheet, a new renter would pay $10 a foot if they're a property owner. If they're not a property owner, they would pay $15 a foot.
I guess my question though is, I'm confused. We have three different people. We have residents, property owners, which tells me maybe you're not here all the time. And then of course, non-residents, you're not a resident at all. My concern isn't, again, don't want to slow it up. It's the existing people, but yeah, if we've got a waiting list, and I think last time we were talking about 30, 40 people on a waiting list. My personal opinion is if you're a full-time resident of this city, you should get first grant. And then the property owner who's maybe here, well, he may not be here at all. They may just be a renter. They may be renting the thing out and have the boat slip. And then last priority should go to the non-resident. It's just my personal feeling and not to disturb anyone who's there. But as these slips come up, it seems to me that we as council can give a priority to our full-time residents.
I think that the resident might be the, a renter. Am I correct in saying that, Patty?
It could be.
And everyone else is a property owner that's here. So that's the only difference you see there. That's, but I, but to your point, that's already the case is Patty almost always reaches out to residents before, if there's a resident or a property owner that is on the list, they get first dibs.
We codify that just to make it, I mean, it's a great policy, but thank you. But just to give you some.
That is the policy.
Because I don't want somebody to say, well, Patty's making the priority. No, Patty's making the priority that council wanted, so.
That's the written policy.
It is written?
Yes, sir.
Fine, that's, that's, that's my question. I have no other issues.
If they can, it looks, I mean, to me, it looks like our current pricing list really benefits those that have the gigantic boats, like the 40-foot, 35 and a half. And actually maybe hurts the ones that have the smaller boats, the 19, the 20-foot because of the minimum. So I kind of like the idea of changing, because right now is the minimum 30 feet?
Yes.
30 feet. So I mean, they're paying, if they have a 20-foot boat, they're paying 10 extra feet that they not really have. So I kind of like the idea of slowly decreasing it down to 20-foot, which is pretty much an average normal-sized boat. And I think that would make it fair for the, I mean, most of the people on here have, you know, in the twenties, so I think we would make it more fair over the, the long-term. Because you said you don't want to change it for anybody right now. And I agree, I mean, you don't want to.
You change a rent, but I don't want to kick anybody out.
No, don't kick anybody out. But I think, and if you compare all the other cities, I mean, they're getting a deal. So even with the increase of the 25-foot minimum, $8 versus $12 resident, non-resident, they would still be getting a deal. So I think it's, I think it's reasonable. So I'm, I'm in favor of, I like the recommendations.
Yeah, what I'm saying is though, with this recommendation, we go to the, the top-end rate, the 10, 15, because that's what it would be over the term for any new person coming in, that's their rate, whether they're, you know, if they're property owner slash resident or however you word the resolution. Because the current resolution, when I went back and looked at it, says property owner.
Correct.
It doesn't say resident. It says property owner. Whether you're a resident or not, you get a break because you're paying taxes. That's, that's, I guess, was the theory at the time.
And the policy was resident or non-resident. So they didn't.
They had a kind of a different policy. So going forward, the suggestion is reduce the minimum to 25, start charging, raising it a dollar for everyone in the Marina. And then any new person coming in, they would go to the final rate, which is the 10 or 15. You know, Mr. Lusk did a lot of background on this. Some places for non-residents, I think it was Dunedin, is double. It's double the price, which, you know, makes it more reasonable. And then people know what that rate is upfront.
Well, here's my feel, my feeling on it is, I agree. We, you know, the whole point of going through this exercise was really to say, we've got a great asset. We need to maximize that asset and make sure that we're making money for the city. Not in favor of reducing the minimum. I think that that needs to stay in place. It's been there forever, should not be reduced. It's a fair price. And I think we need to look at moving forward for new renters or even a year down the road, give notice. But here's our right, our rate increase that we expect to have in place. But the whole point of going through this exercise is we've said over and over, we have assets in the city that we're really not utilizing to the best of our ability. We're not, we're not using that asset. And I know that, you know, it's a benefit. If I lived right next door and could walk to my boat in town and not have to get in the car and drive to Dunedin, that's a huge benefit. I think that we should make sure that we're being good stewards of managing that asset. And I don't think it's out of line to have a slight increase. I think that there's a lot of benefit to having your boat in the neighborhood.
I mean, to Jody's point, and it's a very valid one, we have to decide as a council, enabulence first financial. And we're charged with both really, but we want to be financial. We only have 19, 18 slips. It's not a lot. It's not like we have 1,800 and we could say, well, we don't care what we bring. Theoretically, it really behooves us to rent the biggest boats we can find because it's more revenue. You take up a slip either way. It's not like we can get two boat rentals out of one slip. One slip, one boat. So really, we should be maximizing it. But with that said, we've had people who've been there for years. We want to be fair to them. So I guess I'm torn both ways. I can see your point going to council to decide whether we raise or lower the minimum. Maybe the price increases, you know, we have a consensus on. So however council wants to do it, it's okay.
Look, I mean, if you just do the basic math, I mean, if you lower it to 25 instead of 30, you're, which, and for a resident, we'll do a resident, that's $200. What they're paying now.
Is 210.
It's, I'm sorry, 210. So if you lower it to 25, it's still 210. So that doesn't change it for a resident.
No, it's 200.
No, but the 25 times eight I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's still two, that's 200.
Right, versus 10. So they'll get a $10 break, so it's about the same versus, but if you look at the 40-foot, that's where it makes a difference. But I don't, I mean, yeah, we want everybody who has a 40-foot boat. But let's face it, some people that live in the city that don't live on the water who happen to afford and have a 20-foot boat, are we going to penalize them because they don't have a 40?
That's, that's.
And make them pay 10 feet extra? So I'm, I'm okay with slowly lowering the minimum. Because either way, those 40-foot boats are going to pay it. It's whether or not we're going to penalize the 20-foot boats.
Having a Marina in Bel Air Beach is definitely a perk. And I think that for the little boats, I think that this is perfectly reasonable. And for the people with bigger boats, I think that there's still, it's completely reasonable to give them a slight increase. I'd love to thank Bill for his research, lots and lots of research. And also I'd like to thank Parks and Rec for looking into this also and reaching out for consensus. And I'm all for it.
So. I'm going to, Bill, I'm going to thank you personally and on behalf of everyone in the city. You did a lot of work and same thing Parks and Rec board, you presented it. did a lot of work, and same thing with Parks and Rec, where you presented it multiple times, so thank you, your expertise is well and much valued by us. I I have no problem, you know, anyone on the phone want to speak?
Council members? Marv?
Okay, um, it's my big, I'm sorry. Do we have consensus to move it forward? Jody, if you wish to make a proposal when we bring this to resolution, you certainly can make the proposal, if Bill has any questions, but you can certainly make the proposal to change the minimum, I mean, and if there's support board at the session, you can change on this line. Bill?
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts in there.
Bill, can you come up here, this way that everyone can hear you on the mic?
Just on? Thanks for everything you guys do, those on the phone, is this, oh, there we go. First of all, I'll just address a couple of things. I'm really curious on how slip number one has become an open slip. I don't know how that happened without going through council. If anyone needs to hear some scenarios, it's become a little less secure because of that. That's one. I really provided the research to help you guys and just see what's current. It is true that something needs to be done. I just think if you're going to do something, make it fair and make it something that sticks for a while, and that was the purpose behind the research. I I addressed one of the council members' comments unfair. I think if you look at something in arrears, you can conclude that there are some boats that have been getting an extremely fair deal while others have been penalized. So to look forward and not want to reduce the minimum, which no other marina has, you're not looking back in time and realizing, wow, these boats have really, for however long, got a really good deal. And they're probably the ones that probably use a little bit more water, et cetera. So, and I struggle with that personally, because I know competitively, we're doing pretty good, but do we want to chip away and look at longer term and and find more revenue? And this discussion originated because of electricity or water, and should we just take it equal and split it out by eighteen? It just didn't make sense. So therefore, here's your research, I appreciate y'all looking at it. You know, I don't know if you realize that some of the discussion, you have seventy-six percent of your slips have a lift. And what's always missing outside of now what you have is competitive research on rates, whether it's a smaller boat or larger, you now have data, is that those slip renters pay for those slips. That in itself, when you do the math, whether it's fifteen thousand, eighteen, twenty thousand dollars now in today's money, that's a large expense to that individual that enhances that property when you're going by. Now, for the individual, it's a choice, it's a luxury, it's something you decide on when you get that opportunity, you get a slip. But it's a big expense, and that in your discussions and decisions, you should always incorporate that piece. It seems to be left out a lot. And nowhere else do they force the slip renter to buy the lift and then remove it. It's really important as you look at that, nowhere else are their minimums. And I'll just close with this. We talk so much about strategy and strategic plans, and it's unfortunate or fortunate that we go through this exercise, but every time we do, we forget the discussion around a strategic plan for the marina. So we're just messing around rates, what's competitive, who's fair to minimum, who's not. We're we're pushing the rock down the road on what do we want that property to be? It very well may be that someday you would prefer nothing but thirty-five foot and above. Now, all the slips wouldn't be able to maintain that, but that's where the strategy comes in first, before you start looking at the research. And just at some point, it would be nice, maybe even the park board can take that up on what is the long-term strategy? And then you get to the rates. But we kind of, we pushed this one down the road, there's your research, I appreciate y'all reviewing it. Is there anything I can answer?
Do you know why slip one is not rentable, and that's a couple thousand a year?
Yeah, I believe there's an output of, Lynn, could you help him?
Yeah, there's a, they, excuse me, they took it out of service. Patty, can you tell me when they did that? Because there's an outfall there.
Yeah.
And the council had a discussion about that some time ago about opening that end up so the residents, if they wanted to put a kayak in there or whatever. So since it's not used for boat rental, that's that's what we did.
And I I think it's it's not quite as wide enough for a boat, so it's a cap slip, if you will. And I I believe you were involved in that matter when we had talked about, that we've now gated off the entire marina. There was a time when you could walk the dock and, you know, kind of enjoy the marina, now you can no longer do that. It's locked off to any other resident if you don't have a boat there.
Since this slip is out, that one is at the end, can we?
We opened the gate, and now people can put their paddleboard in, or their or their kayaks, or whatever. The thought was they could launch them. I think you kind of adjusted it.
But do we actually open it, or we hope it is open?
It's open.
That's good, maybe we should, I didn't know about that. I don't remember that. And I mean, with Seventh Street, with the Seventh Street Dock being, you know, under construction now, and that whole thing being under construction for six months, that's a nice thing to to know that we have that option, so.
Yeah, it's, it's been open, I don't know. You know, I'll share a couple of thoughts on that. I like the idea of the it being open, but as someone who's down there a lot, I'll tell you just a couple of scenarios. I've never seen a resident go down there and launch anything since it's been open. But what has happened is you're seeing a lot of pickup trucks come in, and they're outside the city, launching, dropping in, and then they're using the dock right next to one of the most expensive boats down there, holding onto the dock, getting up on the dock, tying up on the dock. At times, that gives them access into the marina now that they're in the water. Last week was really interesting. We had five days of one of the, you know, and these guys are getting a job doing building the docks and the pilings, they decided slip number one was going to be their spot for five days. I personally didn't say anything, and I'm sure the city was aware of it or or not, but when the storm started to come through, I got a hold of the owner and said, get it out of there. You have a a wedge on there that, or whatever that's called, it's thirty feet high, and you've got seventy mile an hour winds. So again, having it open that way, I've seen more non-residential situations impede security and safety, et cetera, than I have seen a resident. But that that might be advertising, that might be just how it has been since you opened it. Anything else, does that help?
It helps tremendously. I mean, again, we have an item coming up here about additional police enforcement. You know, I've seen it on the Seventh Street Dock, where people come down, they don't have a sticker on the car, and I think Mr. Reed's even caught a few people a few times, and it's like.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna leave slip one open, then it's it's not resident or non, it's just like our parks, and that's okay. I mean, I'm just, I'm just sharing a couple stories.
No, but it is a resident, you're not allowed to park in, well, I guess you could park in the marina and launch theoretically, you have another sticker.
So unless I said anything, though, that could have been a damaging situation with the storm. They were going to leave it there, they were tying it down, I told them to remove it. Anything else?
I have a question, because for some reason, I just haven't looked at that one particular spot, I guess because it's way off in the corner, but is that something we maybe if we think that it's a problem, just allowing anybody to, you know, to hang out next to this, this nice boat? Maybe we should consider maybe a place for a floating jet ski, you know, something like that, that we could, we could rent that slip. I mean, it's it's more income, if it's, if we don't want people there, we could certainly reserve that one spot, and that's a little more income.
Well, the the main thing is it's an outfall.
So we're floating.
Yeah, yeah, so that that is beneficial to leave that, and it's a small, it's tiny. I know Patty and I talked about it.
Yeah, I don't remember the footage, but it is small.
And I think it kind of angles, I'm sure.
Yeah, and and the other problem we had there a lot of times was that Dan's Island, they would do a lot of different things there, and we had issues with them, I know that over the years. I I don't know, Bill, you probably know more about it.
No, it's interesting, Lynn, I I remember a boat in there for a while.
There was, several years ago, but, you know, I don't know how long that's been.
It's been at least five, right? At least five, if not more?
Probably.
Seven?
I would just encourage you to look at that slip in the long term, on just, and I don't know what that would take, Lynn, some type of fence that went all the way down. Right now, it's sticking out three to four feet.
Yeah, we were trying to prevent someone from climbing over it.
Exactly, so what's happening is they're they're getting in, but then they're using the dock, they're tying up on the dock, they get out, they go get their car, backing it up. So it's giving them access to that slip number two.
Well, we could look at putting a fence along it.
Yeah, whatever you think. So anyways, that's slip number one.
Patty, I've got a comment.
Okay. Go ahead, voice where?
Yeah, I would, I would say that, you know, long ago, we identified that marina as a valuable asset, a value, one of the few assets we have here, and we put a lot of thought in there, COVID trying to put all that stuff on the back burner to to see what was going to happen. It may be controversial and a lot of those those things now. One of the original thoughts was to take that slip number one and even maybe two and three, and build a fuel dock there, try to bring the business into that area. Now, you're going to get pushback, obviously, from the the people who have slips there, but, I mean, that's one of those things we need to look at. I always think about the litmus test, which would be, if Clearwater Beach owned that property, I guarantee you, it would not look the way it does six months from now. And and the other aspect is, we revisited this lift thing, and how many other places can you take a boat in and say, I want to put a lift in my slip because I don't want my boat in the water? Well, Bellar Beach allows you to do that, and, yeah, at your own expense. That doesn't mean that the next person who rents that slip may want a lift, so take it with you. That's all I have, thank you.
Well, thinking back to not for that, because I had lift on here, and I'm kind of a little bit different than Glenn on this, because to me, I feel like a lift is, could be an asset, like the next person may want to rent it because there is a lift there. So I I would say is, if, like, let's say Bill decides to leave and he has a lift, and maybe you have a waiting list, if that next person would want a lift, then why do he have to remove it just so the next person has to rebuild it? That just seems like so wasteful, so it should be some kind of contract referral.
So charge a premium for it.
So, I mean, just take over whatever contract, and then the next person would remove the lift or whatever if there was no person. I would, I would see the lift as an asset. I think if you have a nice boat, you don't want it in the water.
No, and I I agree, and if you want to provide that luxury, you charge a premium for it, because somebody's got to maintain it and replace it when it, if it runs out of useful life.
Well, I think that's part of the, you roll it over into the next one, saying, hey, if in five years, this lift that was here that you took ownership of breaks your, your costs to do it, so it takes it off of the city, but it's not an automatic, okay, Bill's leaving, so take your lift with you, because that seems wasteful. Where it could be an asset to, hey, you want to rent this slip here, and you have a thirty-foot boat as opposed to a twenty, here we go, here's a slip, do you take responsibility for any repairs?
I have a really good example for that, and it's a great question. First of all, I don't think the city should ever take on maintenance of lifts and getting the lift business, no way, no way. But here's a really cool one that happened recently, and I I think it's just a phone call type of thing, because that slip renter knows they're responsible for removal. It's in the paper. You just always start there, you know it, you bought it, you remove it, leave it the way you entered. But the one next to me recently was interesting, because a very similar-sized boat came in, or is coming in, and the gentleman who was there was calling me from Michigan, Bill, guys are coming down, can you help me make sure that the it gets taken apart, I got to get it done by the end of the month? He was trying to get it removed, so he didn't get another month's slip rental fee. He ended up giving it away, and someone took it, they put it in their home in Clearwater, someone he knew. A couple weeks later, the news reporter is down there looking at the spot, thinking, what am I going to do for a lift? It was a very similar boat.
So at that point, you're also limiting what size boat can get in those slips, right? Because most of those lifts are rated at ten thousand pounds?
Really, the question would be, a phone call would have solved that. But I don't know if that fits with how things work, so I I don't want to be recommending that, I just feel as if in that scenario of, you already had the slip renter, hey, there is this type of slip with a lift, would you like to look at it before that guy removes it? That that might be an interesting scenario, but the city should never get involved.
They did do that.
We don't want to be a marina, marina, marina.
No, they have, Patty, Patty said they have had people that's taken over somebody else's.
Sure, sure.
It's less wasteful, I mean, that just makes sense. If the next person wants it, the boat is appropriate, then.
You could strike a deal with the existing owner.
Yeah, and the city doesn't have to.
They don't want to be in the middle.
No, you just say, hey, this is Nicky working out.
You can give him the telephone number, I think that's after that.
Statistically, you have twenty-eight percent of your boats that are below twenty-five feet, so I'll go back to that piece as well. Everyone knows the number one selling boat is twenty-two to twenty-six. You got nine out of eighteen that are over thirty feet, which is interesting. And then you can look at the number of lifts, thirteen out of eighteen, so that means five are without lifts, which are your bigger boats. So there's, and that's a tough one as a slip renter to go, you know, that's my fellow boater. That's why I've always said, boy, things are pretty good down there, why are we doing anything? But if you look at the long term, just do it right and get it set, and we'll keep an eye on it for you. So, is there anything else?
Bill, let me open it up to the floor, if anybody has a question. I'm going to, again, we'll dispense with the protocol, speak right from there, because Bill is up here, I don't want anybody too close.
So I have a couple of questions, if it's all right to ask, Bill?
Yes, ask directly.
So the twenty-one to twenty-six boats, you said are the, basically, most popular size boats. My question to you, to you, or Patty, or Lynn, that end slip, what typically, what was the typical size that used to be housing? Was it a twenty-one foot, was it a thirteen and a half foot, or was it?
Lynn, I do know the last boat, he was there for a while, he lives across the street. That was a twenty-two to twenty-three foot boat.
Okay, so it was a twenty-two to twenty-three foot, now did he have a problem maneuvering it?
I couldn't answer that.
What I didn't understand is, at what point can we stop renting to small boats? And I know that there's an outfall there, okay, but that person, okay, with rent, with the caveat, people know that that outfall exists, you know, that. I don't know, I haven't seen that, I've seen the dock from a distance, but I don't know where the outfall's position is, it's probably underneath that dock, or where is it?
Yeah, it's it's under, it's down the seawall. I don't know when they stopped renting it, it was before my time, so I can't.
Patty, I got one last comment.
I know for a fact, two residents of Bellar Beach have gone on next door, that they were looking for for a slip to rent, and they have that smaller boat, so I don't understand why we're losing this revenue, why this is this, this revenue basis.
Well, it sounds, it sounds to me, first of all, June, good point, don't have all the data, but it sounds to me it might just be a piece of research going, why exactly did we stop doing that? And if it's something, I do think that if it was on a lift, the outfall, or whatever you call it, wouldn't impact it the way it would if it was a boat that was a wet slip. But I don't know, I don't know why it stopped.
Can we get that as a follow-up item for, just the follow-up items on the, on the council? I'm just trying to move this. I'm just trying to move this along here in...
Mayor?
Yes?
Vice Mayor had a comment?
Sure. Do we have any more from the citizens first? Oh, yes.
Just one more comment. My best friend's always had a boat, and he's moved so many times, I can't even mention it. And it's always been because a resident or a property owner, because he's always in new developments. They can only stay there if a resident or renter didn't want it. But if the property owner had a new boat that came in, he was given six months to find a new place. So if we have all these non-residents that are ready, I'm curious why we don't take care of, you know, renter or citizen, and give them six months to adapt.
How does the contract structure, Lynn? Is it perpetual, or is it nearly, how does it work?
No, they're, it's perpetual, but there's a list. And Patty was responsible for the list, and she would go down the list and say, "You got a boat, we got a slip open, do you want it, okay"? You went down through the residents, property owners, whatever you want to say. And at that point, if none of them wanted it, then you went to the top person on the non-resident list. And that's, at times, I think, from what I understand, probably at times, there were a lot of non-residents in there because the residents didn't take them. There's people that put their name on the list that don't have a boat even.
I think what he's asking is, if we have, like, however many non-residents right now, and there's a waiting list of six residents, why are we letting...
Well, you wouldn't kick them out.
I guess that's what...
Well, ones that marinas do. As a matter of fact, almost all of them, California. They give them six months and they're gone.
I don't, I don't know if...
Well, I've seen it happen to my friends who do, and it's not...
I don't know locally if they do that.
Well, but that doesn't mean it's not the right thing to do. The residents should have a right, as far as I'm concerned.
Because a lot of, you know, I mean, like, currently...
Just don't reuse your contract.
Yeah.
Well, I think we would have to do that going forward if we did it. I don't think you can go back and...
No, if the council even changes it.
Well, I don't know if you go back and tell somebody, you got to get out tomorrow if their contract says they don't. Do you?
You can't breach the contract. You can't breach an existing contract. Like, the city attorney will tell you that. But after the contract's over, that's a different story.
There's no length of term on the contract.
Yeah.
It's a period.
Yeah, it's all automated, you know.
I think what I'm hearing is, I mean, we've got, and I think Glenn made the point a little while ago, there was a lot of information that was put out by the planning committee about things we could do, other options with boats and stuff, other areas that could be developed, we've got a waiting list. And, you know, the virus hit, and we weren't able to address some of this stuff. Those are still very important suggestions. And I think this council, not tonight, but we can take a look at this because to Jody's point, we're supposed to be maximizing revenue. We've got boat slips that are going unused, we've got a piece of property that's going unused, and there was a proposal for how we could put big boats in that piece of property. I mean, this is stuff that the council really should take a look at. And, you know, and I think if anything else, to Mr. Wall's point, we're helping the residents. You know, residents should get the top priority, as far as I'm concerned. I'm not in favor of tossing anybody out immediately, particularly if you've invested thousands and tens of thousands on a boat lift. But, as these things come up, or, you know, if we want to accelerate it, that land was given to the residents. If you read that plaque that's in that marina, the man who donated that land gave it to the residents, so the residents would enjoy it. So I'll go back to that plaque, that was the intent.
Just going forward, I mean, I agree with all those other options about the planning committee, but I think we should focus on maybe this one.
Let's get it out of the committee.
And push this one forward, and then we can worry about the other ones instead of trying to them all at once. Did someone on the phone have a comment?
Yes.
Okay. And we still have Bill up here, so any questions for Bill, then he can sit down, and then we'll... Does anybody else have any questions for Bill?
Vice Mayor?
No, no, I just wanted to make one last comment on this.
Let me just thank...
Thanks, Catherine.
Glenn, give me one second. Thank you so much, Bill, for all the work and research and advice. Glenn, go.
It seems to be a languishing issue along with the list. The Marina is not a 501(c)(3) operation. The overarching question is, what serves the city and the residents in general best? That's the overarching principle. Yeah, we'll take into account the data points and the best wishes to the people who've been there for a while, but at the end of the day, it's not a nonprofit operation. What's best for the city and the rest of the residents? That's it, thanks.
So let's, Glenn, thank you. More, do you see, more comments?
Councilmember Beam? The line's open, but he's not there.
I'm going to move this forward then, if nobody else has any other comments. So, I think there's a lot of points that need to be followed up on here, and I think that was just well said. You know, this is supposed to be for the residents, and that's what that plaque says. So, I think we, as council, can focus on this. But to get this out of the committee, because Bill Lusk is right, I spoke to him on the break. This has been going, I think, since, I don't even remember, it's been a long time.
Two years.
Yeah, April, maybe. So, to move this out of the committee, we have a proposal right now to change the rates. We're not voting on it tonight, it's just to get it to a resolution. Jody, to your point before, I don't know if I got a chance to complete it, but if you want to change the minimums, or, you know, right now, I think it has reduction, as it's written. But if you want to change that, that's something that can be changed on the fly at the next meeting. So, you just make a proposed amendment. But to move this out of the committee tonight, can we get a consensus?
My proposal would be to listen to what Lynn proposed, and that is that we keep the minimum in place, and over the next two years, have an inflationary rate. We have a base that we're increasing these rates on. And he says an inflationary rate should be $1.89 over a period of time. Not all at once, but that it would happen over a period of time. So I think that we, you know, that we consider something along those lines. It seems that everything I buy has an inflationary increase in it. Every lease I sign has an inflationary increase in it. And I think that that's a good tangible measure that we can keep moving forward on. Now, how we, you know, how we apply that, we might want to, you know, take a look at that. But I think that we keep the minimum at 30 feet. We keep, you know, the rates where they are through the term of the lease for each slip rental. And then moving forward, you know, maybe we cut that to $1.50. We do a 75 cents a foot increase on this renewal and on the next renewal. And any new renters will pay the full price. So it's kind of a compromise.
Bill?
Can I say something?
Yeah, could you just say it into a mic so everybody will be able to hear it? Or, you can use the mic over here if you want.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'm not sure where that strategy's coming from. It kind of defeats, it's not looking at anything.
Oh, full mic up.
Oh, sorry.
And turn it on, it should be green, there you go.
It's not, that concept is not looking at anything. And I would encourage everyone to kind of look around at their own household. I can't name anything myself that I pay, that I sign up for, and I put it in the vendor's hands, that the rate will go up accordingly based on inflation. I just, I'm struggling with that in general. I mean, is there anyone that can cite an example of something in their life that it's based on inflation, other than going to the grocery store? The minimum you're still not addressing, we're just kind of brushing across that. You're not looking at... And if you're, if you are, I would like to see some type of strategy to the marina. If, and this is just my recommendation, if you were going to keep the minimum, there has to be a strategic plan tied to it, because it's been going on for a long time, and not one person is able to answer why we have one and no one else does. So, I'm just in disagreement with that, that's all. So, minimums, I don't understand why that's a big deal. And to address, and then I don't understand the inflation one. Nobody wants to rent anything having an unknown. Thank you.
I think every commercial lease I have has an inflationary increase in it. And I don't look at this any different than a lease. That's what they are, they're leases. Renting a piece of property from the city of Bella Beach.
I'm sorry, I think it's because the city manager's suggestion that we were looking at, that we've been talking about, was the one that came, I guess, out of the committee, right? And that was the one that's on the last page. So are you saying to deviate from that? I just want to make sure I'm...
He gave us two options when we first opened this up. The first was the last page, and the second was his inflationary number. That because we've had no increases in how long, Lynn?
14 years.
14 years, no increases.
So that one we don't have in our book, you just added that one, okay. All right, I just want to make sure I've got the two, all right?
You know, it...
What sounds is this doesn't figure in inflationary cost into your business? I mean, just the whole thing costs and the escalating maintenance costs. I mean, the city is finally getting smart about factoring that stuff in, looking long-term down the road for its capital improvement and budgetary stuff. And are you kidding me? Factoring in no inflation cost into your business cost? That makes no sense whatsoever.
Well, to me, this, this plan from the review committee is, I think, more simplified than the... And I think if you get into the, like you said, the unknowns, 75 cents, 78 cents, maybe next year, who knows what happens with the economy? Now it's 85 cents, I mean, or dollars or whatever. I think that gets confusing. So this is more of a structured, renters know what's going to happen two years from now, four years from now, moving forward. New renters know exactly what their rate is. Obviously, this can be changed in five, 10 years if we need to up it, or whatever. So, I mean, to me, this is just more finite, more structured, makes sense. And honestly, the people that have the 40-foot boats are still getting an amazing deal compared to other nearby marinas. So I don't think, they would be, I mean, I can understand if we're making it like those people with the 35, 40-foot boats, it's going to be so ridiculously expensive that there's no reason why they would stay, and now they're going to go to Dunedin, because they're not residents anyway, they don't matter. Then I would say, okay, this doesn't make sense. But they're still getting a good deal better than Dunedin. So, I like this, this plan here on the last page.
So, we have two plans before us. We have the plan that's on the last page, which I'll call the Plan on the Last Page. And then we have the Inflationary Plan that was composed by Lynn, which is to adjust by the cost of living, okay? So, and I don't know if we're going to get consensus tonight. We might just move this both to the floor and see what happens that night. But, let's take it around the room, it's not a vote, but let's, Fred Riley?
Well, I just wanted to make a clarification. I'm looking at the agreement, and you have 15 days with or without cause from either party. So you have the ability to modify the lease anytime, basically, anytime you want to.
And terminate the lease if you wish, right?
Terminate the lease if you want to.
Okay, so, if it's okay with everyone, if everyone's got their comments in, does anybody have any more comments? Okay, let's see where we stand as a council. So, I'll just take it from Jody. We have, I'll call it the Inflationary Plan or the Last Page Plan?
I'm going to say Inflationary Plan.
Dave? I'm sorry?
The Bill Plan.
That's the Last Page Plan, right?
Yeah.
I'm going to go with the Last Page Plan also, Robin?
Last Page Plan.
Last Page Plan. Glenn?
I'll go with the Inflationary.
And R?
Councilmember Beam? He's not there. Still open, but he's not there.
All right, we've got three to two. It's not an overwhelming consensus. I don't know whether we push them both to the meeting and, you know, when we have full council...
I'm just going to make a suggestion. Let's go forward with raising the fee a dollar in the next, you know, maybe we notify them six months from now or something.
Last Page Plan.
Okay. Let's raise it a dollar, and then we can look further down the road. But 14 years is a long time not to raise the rates. So, my feeling is, just leave it how it is right now, and just raise it a dollar, and then if we need to do more studies, we can do that. It will simplify it.
So you're proposing keep everything in place as it is and just raise everyone's rate a dollar across the board?
I don't think that...
We're ignoring everything that the committee said and everything else, I mean...
Well, if you want to lower the minimum to 25, that's fine. But I'm just talking for now. Just raise it a dollar, and that's what the committee...
Let's do this, okay, because we can go on all night. This is, I remember this phrase from Florida League of Cities, managing boat docks, and that's what we're doing here. And we really are managing them tonight. Let's, we have a three to two consensus, it's not overwhelming. We're missing two people right now. This could easily change. I'm going to say, you have the consensus, it's three to two. Bring it to the, to the floor. Bring it with alternatives, right? It's okay to have alternatives on a resolution, right? As long as we advertise the alternatives, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so put the alternatives out there. No alternatives on the fly, though, okay? They have to be presented beforehand. And we'll vote on it, but we have, we got to get four votes, one way or the other, if it's going to pass. If not, we'll go back to the drawing board, and Bill Lusk is going to kill us.
I have a question.
Yes.
This is what Parks and Rec just came up with.
Yes, Last Page Plan.
We employed them to do this, and I think it just needs a yes or no vote. And if we both know, then we go back and we try it again.
We have consensus, it's three to two. That plan is what advanced. But I'm just saying, if you want to, if anybody, we have three to two, we're missing two members. If there's alternatives, the alternatives can be presented.
Well, I don't think I would. If the group consensus is to use that plan, and if at the meeting, somebody wants to change the minimum, because that's dropping, then you can do that at the resolution. But that's what we'll bring you, that plan. Is that fair?
It works. I mean, Jody, I think you still could get the proposals in, and Glenn can also get the proposals in, and see where it goes. This is a change, you have two other members voting.
No matter what, the boat will land, we'll raise it a dollar.
Let's move it forward, okay?
Mayor?
Yes?
Okay, the phone and the recorder both had a full charge, and they're both at the end. I need to go see if Kyle's recorder is charged. So can we break and turn it off?
So this matter's finished, right? And we're going to move on. And when we come back, number three, short-term rentals, okay? Patty, it's 9:17, how much time do you have?
Uh, five minutes.
Five minutes? Okay. 9:20, back on the record here. Patty, you're good, recording your full set?
Yep.
Okay, good. All right, item number three now. Discuss condominiums, short-term rentals, Councilmember Shirley.
Okay, this is going to be one of those items, it's probably a quick discussion. But I know we talked about it briefly at the last meeting, and the question keeps coming up. And I think, spoke to Fred Riley about it a little bit at the last meeting. How do we determine if a hotel is really enforcing our short-term rental requirements? Or lack, you know, we have a requirement that it has to be a three-month rental in the, for residential properties. We've got numerous properties along the beach that are doing nightly rentals, weekly rentals, that sort of thing. Are we, how do we attack that? Is that something we want to continue to allow? If not, how do we look at it and see how we can overcome having Airbnb or nightly rentals on the beach?
Our code permits short-term rentals on the beach. So we have a difference between the two codes. We prohibit residential, but we don't prohibit that. So, I know we talked about it a little bit last time.
The zoning.
The zoning, yeah. So short-term rentals on the beach actually are legal, yeah. And I think, you weren't here last time, right?
No, I was here, and we talked about the different uses and the zoning for the residential medium, I think it was, and...
It was a natural low.
Low. And so the question was, is that something we want to look at?
And let me just add to that, is it something we even can look at? Because this all started with, we got that information from Reddington Shores, I think it was, and they were grandfathered in like us. And the wisdom has always been, the conventional wisdom, don't touch a short-term rental thing, or else you run the risk of losing the grandfathering. or else you run the risk of losing the grandfathering. Yet, they commissioned a team of attorneys apparently and they figured out a way around that, at least so far, that this survived. So with that, that's what I know on it. I'm going to turn it over to you, Fred, and see your comments. Sorry for the delay.
Well, the the law is related to the, it's 509.032 subsection seven, which is 509.032 subsection seven, which is to preemption. And subsection B says, a local law ordinance or regulation may not prohibit vacation rentals or regulate the duration or frequency of rental of vacation rentals. This paragraph does not apply to any local law ordinance or regulation adopted on or before June 1, 2011. So that that's the thing you have to be exceptionally careful of, okay? Having said that, there's a attorney general opinion that Lynn sent on to the city council members. And the question in the attorney general opinion is whether you can, you can amend your law. And the answer is yes, you just can't amend it in a way that is inconsistent with the the paragraph that I just read you. And what the mayor is talking about is another city that that basically sought to put regulation, and I'll just put regulation in air quotes, they they sought to put regulation in that did put, in my opinion, conditions in that probably would make it more or less desirable for somebody to go in into the business of doing this, okay? So they, in essence, put up conditions that required they meet certain standards and they they were, I would say, walking a tightrope of some sorts in in doing that, although, to my knowledge, they are still, they haven't been challenged yet. So up until now, it it would appear to be a viable avenue for you to pursue if you wanted to to really pursue it. The thing I would ask is a question is, how big of a problem is it? And is it a problem you really want to tackle because the problem's so big?
I think my biggest concern is we continually say we're, we have no commercial properties. I think an Airbnb, a hotel, whatever they call themselves, Bel Air Beach Hotel, which I don't know how that's not a commercial property, although they claim that each room is individually owned to get around the whole hotel thing. But clearly, they're operating as a commercial property. There's, there are, I think, three properties along the beach that are operating as a commercial property, have check-in and checkout every day. They're renting rooms. I see a conflict in our code, our land use code. There's conflicts that need to be resolved.
The the three properties are condominiums, I assume, correct?
Good question, Lynn. What are they?
Uh, according to the the tax appraiser, based on, you know, because I did talk to them about that, they're being taxed as commercial entities. They're just, you know, as an example, Bel Air Beach Resort, a section of it's called a timeshare. A person that owns 21 of them in that resort. The rest of them are scatter ownership. There's about, I think there's 42 in there. There's 21 of them that maybe somebody owns two of them and another person owns one. The preemption that Fred's talking about, you can't tell them how many days they can rent for it. You can't do that. It's preempted. The state's taking that away from you. What you could do is create regulations and inspections and make them have a certain license and do all that stuff. And that's really what, I think it was Reddington Shores, am I, am I right, Mayor?
Uh, Reddington Shores, yes.
Okay. That's what Reddington Shores basically did. They just created more paperwork or inspections on all of condos, that didn't matter if it was, as an example, Nautical Watch. Nautical Watch is a timeshare entirely. It's entirely a timeshare. And the property appraiser said it is taxed as a commercial property, but.
And operates like a commercial property.
Yeah. But he told me, and then they are looking at some of those, the other two. But the issue is, we don't have zoning for commercial, but we have residential medium, which is 15 units per acre. I think that's what it is. I may be off there, but we.
So it gets back to our comprehensive plan then is not correct. I mean, we need to clean up our land uses and our.
Well, I I don't think it's going to get you any extra money. It's not going to do anything there. I think what what I kind of hear is you want to regulate, but you can't regulate them on how many days they rent. You can't, can't go backwards. And that's what the, you know, it says even in the attorney general's opinion. But you can regulate them with other things like.
I'm not certain that I want to write, I'm not certain that I agree with you there. I just see this as an ongoing problem. I've heard over and over and over, we have no commercial properties, we're all residential. That is not true. That is not what Bel Air Beach is. And so either we need to regulate the, we need to clean up our comprehensive plan.
Which is due to be.
Which needs to be done. Um, yeah, it's due to be reviewed 2020 is the end of what we have.
Yeah.
You know, it's got to be done in 2021, so early. And then we, and then, you know, I don't, I'm not sure what I'm saying other than our code, our property uses, things are not, we don't have it set up properly. We, I'm not sure if there's more tax benefit to the city if we put these properties in a commercial zoning and if we have a commercial land use. I don't know the answer to that, but it's something that really needs to be looked at.
I'm I'm looking at section 54-35, which is fees, and it has the the following scheduled licenses for apartments, hotels, and resorts slash timeshares. And it has then a number of different fees. So I, until we're sitting here talking about it, I, for some reason, was under the impression this was condos, okay? If it's timeshares, there's a certain chapter in the Florida statutes that governs timeshares. And I assume if if they have a timeshare and they are, if it is operating as a timeshare consistent with that chapter in Florida statutes, then I don't know what you can do about it.
I think it's condos. And condos, and I think the one is split.
I'm drawing the distinction.
Yeah, no, what I'm saying, I think what we have is condos. I remember when we visited that one where they had dogs on the beach.
That's the condos.
Right. It was condos and they have certain rental units, but, you know, yeah, it's condos. I didn't, I didn't.
I'm reading the code and the code is, says it's contemplating a license fee for a timeshare. So to to analyze the the problem, it it would be helpful to know, are the three buildings or the three different entities, are they condos or are they timeshares? And that, you know, I'm.
Bel Air Beach Resort, the.
The four side.
Yeah. That is condos. There are 21 of them are individually owned, 21 of them, 21 of them is owned by one individual. Okay. Uh, Nautical Watch is a timeshare.
And then what about Bel Air Beach Hotel?
Uh, I think it's a mixture, but don't quote me on that.
See, we don't even know what goes on there. And the place needs, we don't even enforce our code there. It's just, needs a lot of work.
Well, people have come and tried to buy it and knock it down and build something else, but they aren't going to build.
Why don't we let them? It clearly needs to be done. The place is a dump.
It's not beneficial to to build because they've looked at it. It's not beneficial to build to our limitations, which is three stories, that's it. That's, you know, if we had a, that hotel would have sold 20 times before, we'd have said, oh, yeah, you can put a 10-story building there.
Not like Clearwater.
Yeah. See, that's, because there have been people come here and ask, can you, can we build 10 stories? No, you can't. Can't do that here. So it's not been feasible to to do that with that property. And it is a home property. The fees that Fred is talking about, that that's one of the areas that we need to look at in the code because I think we need to raise those fees.
Yeah, because we have these rental fees. Is that just for residential property, single-family residential properties or is that condos as well?
Condos.
So does every one of these timeshare units pay it? And does every condo in that.
Nautical Watch pays this fee. And so does the, I'm getting confused, but the resort motel, they pay individually, the other one pays as a group because it's one of them. So they pay these fees, which need to be raised. Since we raised the rental registration, this this fee should be raised also. So that would be a code change that we work on. Because if you're going to raise the the rental registration fee for an individual, this should be raised.
So is this something that we should address in the code review? Or is this something for the comprehensive plan?
Well, the fee issue is probably code review. Once we hire someone, you know, we need a planner for the comp plan. Once we go through that again, the planner will probably give a seat direction on what to do with those, the three you're talking about. The rest of them are all condos, or actually two. Those, Bel Air Beach, love them before, that one is a condo and they they pay the $300 rental registration fee. Actually, today.
Or unit. Not, are you saying that all the 21 units that are owned by the same guy here only pays one fee? Or does he pay the fee for every one of his 21?
But that's an issue that we're arguing with that individual over. Because he wants to classify himself as a timeshare with his 21, but the other 21, no, they pay individually. Today, we collected, I think it was 53,000 dollars, I think today, for the rental registration. And we're sitting there, we're setting notes because now they don't want to. So, but, I, you know, I see your point. If we want to, when we look at the comp plan, if we want to try to change that designation, you know, we'll have to go to the county and all that stuff. Why it's the way it is, I can't tell you.
Because no one's ever cleaned it up. I mean, we really need to have a planner on call or someone we can get to talk through, someone that's got that is more familiar.
But, yeah, so, but as far as changing how many days they can rent, I don't think you can do that. You know, based on attorney general's opinion, I don't think you can do that anymore so. And, but, I think if you wanted to do what Reddington Shores did, which really all it is is a regulation, they're regulating it, they're doing inspections, you know.
Well, and I think there's some validity to that, right? If you're, if you're paying a rental fee and you're doing a short-term rentals in your condo, you're running a business. There should be some regulation in relation to that.
Well, you know, that's something that.
I mean, I met a lady out on, she said, she rented a place out on the beach and she said, I just walked on the beach, she said the place was filthy, it was disgusting. And she drove in from like North Carolina, so she had to go get it cleaned up, you know, and I, and to to Reddington's point, I understand why they do it, you know. Of course, I go back to, if I owned a condo next to the place that was being rented nightly, I'd be furious because they're running a business out of that condo. And I'm trying to live my life in a home that I purchased to live in, and I certainly don't want someone running a business and having a revolving door next door to me.
Well, I will tell you this, there's very few condos personally that complain to us about rental registration. And I think that's because it's.
It's acceptable now?
Huh?
It's acceptable now?
Well, I think partially it's acceptable. And the other thing that I think is, is some of the the people that live in the condos just don't want to rock the boat, you know? They've got some neighbors and, you know, this may be their friend that comes here and rents at the end of the month. And, you know, so, because because we've had, I mean, I've talked to some of the condo people and they say, well, you know, I think this one's a rental. And we went and checked and the guy next door, you know, no, no, I don't want nothing to do with this. So it's it's kind of hard to catch him, I guess, you know, to say, you're trying to catch somebody. But, and and a lot of people will say, like, what is it, Mark? This gentleman came in and told us, oh, there's more rentals in there than you know. Well, how do you, how do you find that out? Because only 20 of them are paying the rental registration fee.
So I guess the takeaway on this is that we're going to look at those fees. Is that something the city's going to do or is that something that we're going to tag tag with the code?
No, I think we need, we need to, 54-35, we need to raise that. Okay. It's not going to, and and we can do that with an ordinance, we just adjust that. Because we already did the rental registration in general, okay? And we'll just get a resolution and you can do that by resolution.
And that's for condos.
That's for condos, or no, it's for resorts and timeshares.
It's for timeshares too?
Yeah.
Okay. So the very nature of a timeshare says, there's somebody here this week, there's somebody else there next week, and they all claim to be owners.
They are.
So.
They own that week.
Right, right. They own that week. Beyond just hitting them with a fee, there's nothing we can do about that.
Not really. Well, you could, I guess you could do the inspections and stuff like that, charging a fee for that, or, you know, if you wanted to. The issue is, that takes a person.
Right.
See, the the timeshare to me is 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 a bigger burden just because of the very nature of what it is. It's a hotel. It's a hotel that you you dictated in 52 weeks. So you're guaranteed you're going to have 52.
On this one, and you know I've talked to you about them asking me to sell them parking passes because the police department ever did, we did it when we got a police department. And I said, no, I'm not going to do that. Just because, just because, Johnny comes out here, you know, because they want people to come there even if it's not their week.
Of course. Well, that, and that's what happens. And if you don't use your week, you entrust the manager to rent your week for you.
No, they allow them to come and use the pool, whether you got a week or a room or not.
Oh, I see.
Like somebody from Tampa, that's, that's what they were wanting these passes for.
Well, I I'm going to to agree with Jody that we've definitely got a problem. And I'll just tell you real quick what I observed. About two months ago, there were four young men that appeared on the beach with a Briggs and Stratton power lining device. They had a steel cable attached to it. They were dragging it all the way down the beach, unwinding the thing all the way down the beach, had a handle on the end. And each kid would take a surfboard down there with his wire, it would fire up the motor and they would slide away all the way back until they ran out of cable. I watched it for about maybe five minutes and so I'm like, okay, as soon as I get home, I'm going to do something about this. So when we went inside, I said, hang tight. So when we went inside, I said, "Hang tight. I'm going to make sure they're still there before I call the cops." And so I hopped in the car, drove back up there, and they were gone. Thing is, I mean, they don't live here.
Right.
They don't live here. And they were right in the middle of a condo timeshare area. I couldn't think of anything worse than seeing that particular night. But it just, this is what we're, well, you know, Dave, I mentioned, I didn't see that.
That's a new one. But we get our annual, we get our monthly sheriff's report. But what doesn't show up on the sheriff's report, you can get automatically sent to you from Nellis County. You can sign up for all the crimes in your area. And I've signed up. Week after week, I mean, anytime we have something, anytime it's domestic violence, it's almost always, bet your life on it, it's up in those condos, okay? So obviously, we're getting a transient population here. And it is bringing out sheriffs, you know, needs for sheriff patrols and stuff that, from surfing on the beach, to domestic violence, to parties, to, we've had dog complaints on the beach. We've had them overrunning our stuff. I mean, just asking you for parking passes, they're not allowed to have them there. It's that simple. That's, it's against...
Well, they want to pay for it.
No, the answer is still no. Don't do that. So, you know, it seems to be a problem. I do have a question though. We've talked about the main places that we all know about. What about a regular condo? As we go up and down the block here, there's a whole bunch of condos. Can they all rent on a daily, weekly kind of basis?
Depends on what their condo docs say. I'm going to give you an example, because interestingly, we've had an issue with 800, with their swimming pool fence. They got a permit, they put it in one way, and they did it another way. And the health departments involved, and they're whatever. There's, I believe it's eight or nine condos there, and all of them are rentals. Nobody that owns them lives there. Yeah, it's an old, old building. You know, it's probably two condos from Morgan Park north. So the one next to it, pretty much the same thing. The one next to Morgan Park, there's a couple people that live there full-time. But, you know, if I went down there and pulled my David thing and ran the plate, I'd probably find that the owner of the property and the apartment's there is not the same.
So, I mean, you know, again, the citizens asked us to consider strategic plan. Number one item is safety, right? And here, the place is a dump. The place is, and I can only imagine how it is on fire and how it is on egress and all the other things that go into making a... These are motels. I mean, let's, you own 21 units? This is a motel, all right? And any 21-unit motel would be inspected. And so to the extent that, I'm not saying to do anything that's going to mess up our grandfather. Lord knows we don't want that. But to the extent that we can put regulations on in terms of, for safety, I think we're doing something good for the citizens and also probably helping the people who live there who maybe don't want to have the hotel or motel next to them.
The fire district does an annual inspection of it. I will tell you that. Of all the condos, they do an annual fire inspection. So we'll look at further deeper than what the Reddingtons did. You know, Indian Rocks did something with, because they messed up their owners.
Messed up their grandfather, right?
Yeah. They did something like noise or parking spaces or registration with the city. You know, so we'll look further into that. And then at the same time, when it's comp plan time, we'll discuss that issue with, should we be trying to change our zoning to commercial for?
Is that something we'll be able to get a proposal for?
Uh, I think what we were trying to do with the planning board was do the code first, and then I was figuring to do the comp plan after. But it doesn't stop me from talking to, we have an agreement with Forward Nellis for their planner. We always use them. I think we can get that, have a chat with the planner.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Is there any, I think they get a condo builder to sell it if they need a timeshare? Do you think that we could do a...
Put something in our comprehensive plan, saying they can't unless they have proper zoning? Yeah, that's the problem. No one's followed through with any of this. The little...
Last comp plan was 2016. It's got to be done in five years.
But all they do is go check, check, check. Yeah, okay, we've covered everything that's required by the state. And they don't really look, they don't plan our community. They don't, they're not doing their job. They're just putting in what needs to be done for the state.
Not taking ahead.
Yes.
So the plant, you know, the, I don't remember who the planner was. Do you think last time?
Was it Deedenbach?
Was it who?
Deedenbach.
Deedenbach.
So I guess the answer is no. There's nothing that could stop any of the condo builders from saying, "Hey, we want to go term two."
And they can put a digital sign out front too. Another code issue that has to be addressed.
If they wanted to go timeshare, they have to follow the requirements of the chapter. And they have to do all this disclosure stuff, because they, they sit in like a condo. I mean, you were heavily regulated for that type of ownership.
To be able to sell the partial...
Do we get notification when someone's filed to do that?
Pardon?
Do we get notification when a condo builder is filing this paper to do that? Can they go to the county and say, "No"?
If it's a condominium, and it's an existing, all of these are existing. So I would assume, I haven't, I've not looked into it, but I would assume that was all done improperly. Maybe that's not such a great assumption. But when the condominium is created, it has to be ultimately approved at the state level. There's a declaration of covenants, and that's usually a 50- or 60-page document. A timeshare, I've never been involved in one, but what little I know about it, you have to get state approval at some point for it. And there's also massive disclosure stuff that has to be made. So if they are existing timeshares, then I again am halfway assuming they're complying with state law. And if they are, then, you know, the timeshare one, I don't know that you can do much about it, because it's fractional ownership. And that's what state law allows you to do.
But I think on a local level, if it's currently a residential...
You want to know if you can have a conversion?
Yeah, if we have a residential low zoning, which is what Lynn just said, that those zoning...
Residential medium.
Residential medium, that condos and timeshare would only be in that zoning classification.
Provided that's what our code says. Provided that's what our comprehensive plan says the use of that is correct. If you have, if you want to change the land use, I mean, because essentially, isn't that what they're doing? They're changing the zoning for that property. And is our zoning based on land use, or is it...
No, it's based on the units per acre, basically.
Well, I'm looking at the first provision, which says residential medium District One is some multifamily use, and the use of buildings shall be for residences for a density of not more than 15 individual family units per acre. So that's the standard that exists in the code now.
That is pretty normal.
Single-family, you said single...
It says single family.
I'm sorry, you said multi-family residences.
Yes.
So if it's a vacation rental? I'm just kind of, I'm just having some, I mean, it's a whole nother...
The questions you're asking are the right questions.
It's a whole nother, you know, topic. I mean, it's something we need to just look into.
The easiest thing, I'll absolutely agree with Lynn, is you get to, you have a code provision that charges timeshares based on the number of units. And it's, for up to 10 units, it's $100. So you can easily change that by resolution and increase it. So that's, that's one way.
So, oh, I have a couple things here to make. First of all, I wonder why we're not trying to really do the databases to go planning the zoning. Basically, because they stick their timeshare routine. So why can't we ask them to take a look and see if they gave the homework for us? If they've been working through the homework for us, it seems to be... Secondly, if we're going to change any kind of zoning, we wouldn't be okay with that anyhow before we start testing the system. So we need to, and then even at the last minute, I mean, we should be double clarifying if we're going to change to R or any kind of work. We're going to be walking into that work desk, if we're not. So at any given time, and then that, that being said as well, we probably have to try to find some kind of mechanism or something, something in place. So we're always being notified when these things change, because we could go from a condo owner into being a timeshare with just a hook of, like, I think it's like $1,000 to change your status. Okay, so, and we might not ever find out. So then we could be into another situation again. Say, Jody obtained a timeshare, and she wanted to switch to a condo. I mean, you know, so you've got to have some, something that checks balances here so we can make sure that we don't walk into something that we didn't want.
What I'll do is I'll talk to the planner or Nellis and just kind of try to answer Jody's questions about, you know, is it worth the, trying to do the land use change? Do we really need it? And I'll circle back to the property appraiser, because, you know, he told me that the categorizing and that was a, or taxing them. So he said, "We wouldn't, you know, changing what they do, you wouldn't gain any tax." Because you're, they're already paying that tax. So, but what I'll do is go back to, have the planner and just ask those questions, and then we'll get some answers for you.
Thank you.
That's efficient, Jody? So this will probably be a topic for another hour session, okay?
Maybe I can get them come to explain.
That'd be good. I mean, I think, you know, there's, these are, there's excellent questions. It's a complicated issue, and, yeah, let's get some answers here. But I, I'm going to go, Robin, I'm not a doctor, but I'm going to play one. Do no harm here, okay? I mean, we don't want an Indian Rocks experience, okay? They, that is a disaster there, so let's not do that.
Now, they're trying to control it with noise ordinance and parking. And I think somebody told me trash cans or something, so I'll give them a look.
The horse is out of the barn. That's the problem.
If somebody charged a fee for like, after you get a call from you, and you get to have the sheriff company to respond, it was, was there a cost or something? Like, if after the second year call, you start, I think, I think I said, yeah. You have to pick up the fee, because, because if this keeps going out of control, the city won't, this city have, will she have to increase our long extension?
Some of them had, where you actually lose your...
Do they have the cost for that?
Some cities actually had to, where after a certain amount of, like, you keep having the party house, okay? After a certain amount of calls, you lose that license, that language, you know, that excels you. And then you can't rent anymore for a year. So, possibility. Okay, can we, we want to move on? Okay. We are now at item number four. Discuss planning and zoning board draft charter. This is the charter for boards' review of city codes. And I know Lynn and Lynn Reeves did it. I'm not sure who's going to describe it here, so...
Well, just to give you a quick, and then Lynn can do the follow one. You know, I ask if any, I didn't get any responses from anyone about any other code that we really wanted us to look at. So if, we're going to give another shot to this. And I need to find out if there's any council members that want to volunteer as advisor. We put out something on the website, and we don't have any responses as of today for citizens. So at this point, if we get a volunteer or two from the council to act as advisor, I think going forward, we just move on. Because we didn't get any other response. Because I'd like to get this started in January. Get through the holidays, get it started.
Now, council members could always, they're not going to be voting members. They want to attend and throw in two cents, and they could certainly come as a guest.
Do that too. You don't have to, you can either ask to be appointed as an advisor or just come to the meetings.
I mean, we right now have it, I think, as one person. I saw that in this, when I read it. I will appoint however many people, you know, within reason, however many people want to do it. I'm not holding back on appointments. So does anybody have any interest in joining this committee?
As an advisory position, if I was a voting member, I would, because it doesn't make any sense to make the commitment if you don't have a city.
I think since we've given it to the planning board, it's not really a separate committee anymore, right? So it's really, we've given this to the planning board, so...
Well, I think, I think we advisors would have a say, and you would sit at the table with the planning board. I think that's kind of the framework that we've tried to create here, because we could get volunteers.
Right.
You know, so...
Yeah, I mean, that's all I, I don't want to go participate in a meeting that you don't have much say in, you know, and you don't have, I mean, I don't mind. Clearly, I've done this before. Dave Gaddis was involved. I think Mar was involved in the past. And it's laborious. There's a lot of material to cover. And I'm not sure that we're covering enough when we cover those sections that, you know, are neighborhood code-related. But then we're adding into it the seawalls and the docks, which there is not much code for at the moment, so...
And there's not much code in any city for seawalls and docks?
Hard to enforce.
Right. Very hard to enforce.
You know, that's, that would be my only thought. I don't mind participating, but I don't want to participate if I don't, if I don't have a voice. So...
The problem is then we have to create, this is an ad hoc committee, as opposed to, because they can't put Tony on the planning board. That's the problem.
Right.
Not that I don't want to, but I...
This was a workaround, because we didn't get the volunteers.
If one of you, one or more, or if two of you are going to the, just show up, and there's a sunshine wall issue.
Yes, and I'm supposed to appoint you to the board, right?
Yes.
Not if it's a nervous meeting.
Why can't we just create an ad hoc committee with those members?
We didn't get anybody.
That's for the board. That's different than choosing councilmen.
They can't serve on the second division.
Glenn's right. I'm not sure we could do that.
Glenn, I'm sorry. Say that again?
Yeah, by the charter of board, a member can't serve on another board or committee.
Right. So I said, "Why can't we take the planning board members and create a committee, an ad hoc committee with..."
Does it have to do with something to have the tourism?
They would have to do that.
Is there anything preventing us from just tasking the board, reviewing code, and providing recommendations?
No.
But we're doing it. But I mean, I think to Jody's point, and, you know, I can't, I have too much going on. I can't, I'd love to help, but I can attend a meeting, and if they want to listen, that's wonderful. If not, okay. But I can't commit to being live and just not even have to vote or anything like that. And I, even if I had to vote, I don't know that I could personally do it, so...
I wouldn't have a problem also assisting, but we would have to make sure that...
But I mean, there's seven of us. Guys?
They're planning numbers.
I just want to have one conversation for sunshine purposes. They all have to be open. Fred, I have to have that out in the open, whatever you're saying. Sunshine.
We're having a discussion about, okay, and I'm trying to clarify this. We've had committee meetings, okay, and council members have come, and council members have talked, not on the committee, and they've talked in the meeting and made suggestions and whatever. The meeting is noticed. They can't do that, even though they're going to vote on it later.
I would say it's, those days are gone.
Okay, whatever.
You're going to have a... But you're, you're going to have a, the, uh, board meet, and that's going to be noticed, and, but if you have two council members come, and it, it, the question is, now you're having two council members that are gonna have a discussion, it, it's in a sunshine meeting, but it's a sunshine for the board, there's just something about it, I don't think is, it sounds like it's a very good idea to them.
What has happened in the past on those meetings is, and we've had a lot of times, sometimes, sometimes even three or more council members were, but you don't talk to another council member.
No.
You speak just to the chair, and you don't rebut what another council member says. It's not the best practice, okay, I, I agree with that. A suggestion, I don't know how many meetings they're going to have, but if they publish their meeting schedule, there's no reason why each, we have seven council members, each council member can be invited, they have seven meetings, each person could have a chance to address them, or you address them for a half a meeting, and then you leave, and the next person comes in for the other half a meeting. You get to put your two cents in, say whatever's on your mind, they take it under advisement, and ultimately, it comes back to us anyway, if we don't like the suggestions, we don't have to accept them. So, they're advisory, it's not, we're not bound by what they say. So, that would work, and give everybody a voice.
What's the difference between being there and hearing what she says versus asking Patty for a copy of the recording?
When you talk, that's, it's always you hear what she's saying, you're good, but the minute you, if you answer her back, that's when you just got the problem. But if Jody says something, and you don't answer her back, and you say whatever you want to say, it just don't get into a debate, you're okay.
So, then you have to take them down.
Sounds like I've been set up.
It's always the second, it's like football, the second person in is the one that gets in trouble.
Well, the, the best practice is not have two of you there that are actively involved in the debate, that, that, that's the best practice.
So, would that, I mean, so, planning board, because we didn't get anybody to volunteer, so, planning board does this, we will have the opportunity, an invitation will be extended to each council member.
Or do you have the opportunity to give us your concern, a list, and we give it to them?
Right, but there's nothing like being there to speak, I mean, you, you get the opportunity to, you know, to hear what's going on, and, you know, and not everybody may want to talk, and I can think so, we get three people who want to talk, so.
Okay.
Unless somebody wants to be appointed, I mean, I, I, I'll give you the appointment on the next council meeting, then it's not a problem.
What's the timeframe to do this?
We want to do it started in January, because we figured the holidays, we went in, one, two, three, four.
Last time we did it, what, in two months or something?
Yeah, it was a couple of months, every other week.
Yeah. I think they were done by the first of March or something, we started early in January, and then done the first of March.
It takes a month, I don't remember. We did it in August.
This is December, yeah.
That's still the restaurant. Um, the point of that too, we have a council election coming up in March, so if we can get this, so it can be voted on, it's this council that will have a chance, I mean, we may have the same exact council, but I don't know, so we'll get a chance at least to vote on it right now, so.
That's, that's why I'm hoping to get it accomplished in a couple of months.
So, we'll move it, I mean, consensus, move it forward with the planning committee, we have a charter here, I'm gonna get Tiffy to talk about it, it wasn't very good to me, but I don't know if anybody has other things to add to it.
And if you have any others, just email it to me, and I'll be glad to add it, because I'm gonna try to have a meeting, then, uh, just to kind of-
I've got a comment.
Yes. Go ahead.
Yeah, my, my question is, is that council member is not a necessity, that's why we're originally drafted, thinking there would be some interest, it's not a necessity, pitch it, pitch it to the planning and zoning board, and get it started, and kick it off, this is important, code review, and you spend more time arguing about a dollar raise on dock fees than something affecting the entire city, so, quit kicking a can down the road and get some business done.
So, we'll move this forward, December 1st, we're voting on this charter, getting these folks charged, so they can start January 1st. In the meantime, they can, I mean, it sounds like it's a couple of months thing, there's plenty of time for every council member to come once, but that should be organized by Patty, so, you know, work out a schedule that's viable, so that two of us won't be there at any given time, and if two of you find yourselves there, only one of you better be talking, but I'd rather, you know, Fred would rather two of us not be there. Okay, that's it, we're good?
One to go.
One to go, all right. Say the best to last, Sheriff, he's sleeping too. Um, last one, discuss supplemental law enforcement services, Pales County Sheriff's Office patrol citations, et cetera. Um, I know I brought this up, but Lynn put this on, so I'll start with you, because I know you did some research and so forth.
Okay, uh, to, the sheriff's supplemental patrol is a contract that we would fill out each time we want to use them. It's $55 an hour, uh, you need to tell them the date and time, and you have to give them some heads-up time, so, that's that section. I also gave you this sheet, because there was a question about how much money you got out of a ticket, and, uh, if, if you're inclined to, I'll be glad to give you this book to figure it out.
I think it was $20, right? Is that, that's what I took out of it?
I found someone at the clerk's office, and, uh, we had probably a half-hour phone call, because I kept trying to get him to tell me, I don't care, I don't understand all these percentages, so, he finally was able to give me something and send it to me, $166 fine, the city of Bel Air Beach got $20.07. So, I picked out one fine, so, you know, it's not like we get a lot of money out of fines, uh, it's a very convoluted process, depending on the size of the fine, maybe, maybe a $250 fine, we get $30, but it, it's, it's, in the scheme of things, it would not pay for, and I did talk to the, the captain of liner, uh, sheriff's not gonna let us direct him to give, give tickets, he's, he's, it's their discretion, and that's the way they want to keep it, because there was a suggestion to, uh, I think, it was like 214 tickets, if I remember right, and, or 214 stops, 57 tickets.
Right, warnings, yeah.
You know, and the question was asked, can we tell them to give 157 tickets in 50 warnings? No, we can't, it's their discretion, so.
And it should be, and it should be, and I don't think that we're hiring supplemental sheriff for, to issue more tickets, it's to really just keep the city safe, right? I mean, I, am I missing something here?
No, the, the idea, what, I, I think I threw the idea out, I said, if we flip these things, this thing pays, or almost pays for itself. Now, keep in mind, when we had that, that supplemental service last time, the sheriff gave us for all the services on several occasions, and we were using them like Tuesday mornings, and, so, okay, we go with Saturdays and Sundays, okay? You could have stood on Gulf Boulevard yesterday and reeled them in, they were all over the place, so, you could have, you know, issued something. Now, I agree, it's their discretion, but if we're gonna do this, and all we're gonna get out of it is a bunch of warnings, I don't know that it's gonna actually get the point across of, quote, they, yeah, just don't mess around in Bel Air Beach, okay? I think that's what we want people walking away with, that's what we want in the newspaper, that Bel Air Beach put up a stepped-up enforcement, and, you know, X amount of people walked home with tickets over here, don't mess around in Bel Air Beach. We're talking about drag racing down the center line, passing on the le, on the right, I mean, you, you know, speeding, come on, enough is enough, that's what this is supposed to be, doing 55 miles an hour coming off this bridge here? No. So, that was the intent, and if it could close to pay for itself, we're good. Um, if we have to pay a little bit out of ourselves, that's the price of securing the city, so, I'm all in favor, I've been bringing this up since the beginning, I ran on this, I think it's something that we need to step it up, we can't do it all with one sheriff, it's impossible, so, I said that to Sheriff Goldy, and I was here, we're asking too much of one officer, that's not possible, but when we had three or four out there, we, we were getting some results.
To, to do with something similar to what they did, it's been required to, because they're gonna have to have, you know, to, to, some of the things like the right turn over it, you gotta have what, what they call a spotter, and then somebody down the street waiting for you. Uh, so, you know, those are potential things, so we're gonna have to budget some additional money for that, and then, uh, you know, how often do you want to do it? I think the speeding, because the majority of the speeding tickets that were given come off this bridge, okay, uh, and they were out here last week and did a warning of that, that caught several that one, but, uh, I think putting that sign that Mr. Worsford talked about tonight, him and I had a good discussion about it, and he's willing to do it, uh, council member Gaddis and I had a discussion about it, uh, on our vote ride, I think that's what we talked about. Uh, so, I think that might help the situation a little bit, because when you get to the bottom of the bridge over there, what happens?
Slow down.
Get the brakes.
Slow down, because they might be at the top of the hill, so, uh, how often do you want to do it? That's up to you, you tell me, then I'll put some numbers together and come back to you.
We were talking about quarterly, but I think, I mean, but I, my personal feeling, and this is me, do it, let's see what kind of results we get, and, you know, I, I, you're talking $20 of revenue, if they wrote, you know, I'm not worried about the revenue, but I mean, if they write two tickets an hour, which I don't think is unreasonable, okay, let's take care of one man, if we have to pay for the other man, you know, I, I think that's, the citizens have come in here over and over again, we have said it over and over again about everything we see, I mean, sooner or later, we're gonna open up the newspaper, and somebody's gonna get killed. And that's not gonna be really nice for our city, I mean, there's a lot of craziness going on, and we're coming up into that season again, you know, January, February, all the folks that are, you know, they just want to get, like, somebody said, they just want to get through Bel Air Beach to get to Clearwater, well, you get through here, but follow the rules, you know, it's real simple.
So, what I'd like you to do, and we can kind of throw this at council comments at the next meeting, that gives you a couple of weeks to think about, how often you want to do it, and do we want to just focus on certain holidays, or do we want to, so, just give me that feedback at the December 7th council, and then I'll get you-
We have to announce this, I mean, you know-
No, 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 no.
I mean, I know we can talk about it, but last time there was an element of surprise, and I think that's-
Well, they still aren't gonna know, I mean, most of these people that they were catching, from what I understand, were, well, I'll say 60% of our, our residents, we had a good influx of our own residents.
Yep.
Fortunately. So, you know, just throw out some dates, we don't have to say, okay, we're gonna do it on the second Sunday, or whatever, and we'll get some numbers together and figure out how many hours we want to do this.
Comfortable comments, I'm, I'm fine with that, that's all I was ever looking for in this, so.
I wanted to make sure you do, you know, because this is a revenue, so.
And I, and I think whenever we originally discussed this, we saw what, what it would have cost for their services.
That was $12,000.
I think that we, he said we would be willing to do like a quarter of that or something, uh, on a monthly basis or something.
Yeah, you don't have to tell me even the dates, you, just, I want you to think about it and say, hey, I want to give you a little budget for X amount of hours, and then I'll give you a number, and you'll have to do a budget.
Okay. No comments? Okay, we're done with that one, everybody's on the phone, it's good? Patty?
Vice Mayor, anything? Marv, anything?
Yeah, Patty, uh, just like to give a general idea, has anybody seen the Clearwater police north of Bel Air Beach in the last couple of years? I've been driving that way for 20 years, and I don't think I've seen one Clearwater policeman up there doing anything, so, if we're gonna pay for traffic monitoring in our city, I think it would be nice if, uh, Clearwater would help out a little bit, and police patrol the north end. Any comments on that?
Yeah, last time George Kritikos told me where to go, and he's a religious guy, so, um, yeah, they basically told me, like, George Kritikos is no longer mayor, so I haven't spoken with the new mayor, but when I reached out to George Kritikos about traffic, he, in no uncertain terms, told me, mayor, enforce your laws, don't blame me, because people are getting away with stuff in your city, that's your problem, and he's right, so, I, I didn't like it at the time, but George Kritikos was right, so, um, if we want to do it, this is our chance to do it, but I agree with you, I've never seen a Clearwater police officer saying, hey, so, I don't know, maybe they don't control their-
Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
No, I haven't known much to add.
So, we'll move it forward, um, council comments, next time is when we'll grab it, okay? Or unfinished business, whatever you think it's best to figure it in under. Uh, last item is general business, do you have any? Just one simple request, Patty and Lynn, uh, they gave a number for the traffic control in 727-464-8926, can we post that on our website, so that citizens will know how to reach them, if there's any issues?
I'd, I'd like to ask the person if they want that.
Okay.
I think he gave it to you.
Whenever I did the, um, Ellis, whatever, for the analysis, that one where I toured all the, all the various areas, um, Ellis University, or it was called, uh, they were actually giving out pens with a, the big stop sign for a traffic light on top, and their phone number, and like, everybody that takes that tour, they give them that number, so, it's not a, in fact, they actually rely on people, citizens, to call in to help them make, uh, attitude adjustments to intersections that aren't working correctly.
I'll just verify-
Just double check it if you would, yeah, but I mean, I thought, I got the impression that he gave it to the city, and not just to us, because it's only seven of us.
Yeah, he made it sound like it was kind of their hotline, and if it's an intersection, you see there's lights at, you can call and ask them to tap back up, you can call and ask them to take a look at it.
I mean, it just would be nice that, you know, the residents are sitting in a 20-minute traffic jam coming off the bridge, that they can pick up the phone and go, hey, it's not worked, and, you know, and let them hear it.
And it's instant, too.
Yep.
They, they will, they can make the correction on the fly, they have about eight people that are monitoring everything in Ellis County.
And that offer, do you think they'll go there or still out there?
I would like to, as soon as we get done with having 5,000 people a day getting sick, I would like to tour that facility, that's what I have in mind. Do we have anything else, general business?
I've got, I've got two points.
Go ahead.
Uh, one is, at one time, we had an invite to go down and visit the traffic ops center, was there any follow-up on that?
You can still, all I need to know is when you want to do it, Tom will set it up.
Are you talking to the mic, because I can't hear you?
Tom will, Tom will set it up, he, he just need, you know, let me know when you want to do it, and you'll be glad to look there.
Okay, yeah, I think it might be beneficial to see what they're actually looking at, and if, if we get the attention on Gulf Door or cause, like, that we, we think we do or deserve. The second thing is, that they left draft or concept or a standing advisory committee, take it for what it's worth, that's my last, smartest shot at those. That's it, that's all I have.
I'm sure I heard that well, but I'm-
Vice Mayor, Glenn gave you something, we talked about in advisory committee, but he just-
Oh, yeah, that's what I said, that looked, to me, that looked very good, I didn't hear any other comments from anybody, but I thought it was a, a good document, but, um, I think you made last call, if there's any other code sections, this is it, so, we're going to charge it next, um, next council meeting, so, if you need to change it, it's fine, but the body of it looked very good, good job.
I think, I think you're talking about two different things.
Two different things.
That, there's a code, um-
Charter.
Charter, and then this is, this is just an advisory committee to keep-
Oh, I did not see that, okay.
An active advisory committee, um, kind of available to us if we have to-
Yes.
-task them with something, we talked about that the last week.
He did, he did mention it, I have not seen that, so.
Kind of an on, uh, on-call, at-
On-call SWAT team, basically, you know? Okay, no, I have not looked at that, but we will, um, we'll look at that and get back.
We're fine.
Okay.
We've got one, it's our-
Our next meeting is November, December 7th, okay, and, um, then we're gonna see about getting a quick turnaround. And then we're going to see about getting a quick turnaround, a quick meeting maybe, and if we need to work, sorry, we've traditionally, for the holidays, not had a work session, but I don't want to, you know, mess anything up here, but we're going to have to have at least a quick meeting to get that second reading on that ordinance, and if there's any questions on that, we'll.
Yeah, just, just a couple of other things, as I said, Patty's on vacation starting Thanksgiving, okay, for the next week. She's, she's scheduled, I'm going to be on vacation next week, but I'll be reached by phone. We're going to put the agenda out by next Wednesday, so if you've got anything, give it to us by Friday. So you're going to get it a week early, mainly because of the holiday and Patty being on vacation. Just to update, the park board decided not to have, cancel all the events for this year, 2020. They're going to create a new schedule and come back to the council.
That should just be put on for our approval, they can, they're advisory, so, you know, we'll accept it, I'll be, I'll guess, but that should just come up as a proposal next time, and you probably should see somebody from the parks board at the next meeting.
Yeah, maybe I can get them.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, so we're not going to do the Christmas tree lighting, we're just going to light it. Part of the grant that we got from, for COVID, from law enforcement, we put in to video control these doors, and I just, before we go forward to part with that, I want to see what, so that, what that would mean is, the only way you'd get to City Hall is you come up and press the buzzer, and we saw who it was. I don't know how council feels about that, we're getting ready to go out on the cameras, but this was something extra that.
We discussed, I remember that.
Florida law enforcement grant, it was that $25,000, so.
So even after COVID, you're kind of, you're going with the idea of keeping the doors locked and being buzzed in, basically?
Yeah. So we'll go forward with that. And then Patty, you want to do my quick update on the survey?
Um, so we put everything together that they had suggested, kind of compressed it a little bit, so a little bit tighter, more.
Okay?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we compressed it a little bit more, so it's a little, they can read it a little faster. And then, so Speedy is going to send it out for us, so we've got everything, all our addresses ready to go and everything, so.
Did you go to bed?
We're just waiting for.
We want to find out, do you want to do it during the holidays, or do you want to, that's what I'm, I need to know.
Men thought it would get lost in the shuffle during the holidays.
How fast can you get it out? If we gave the authorization like tonight, how fast could it get out?
That's.
I'd probably say in a week or so.
Yeah, probably not a week, yeah, really.
Oh, you're going to get caught up.
I'm just asking, you know, I'd rather get good response than minimal response.
Yeah. I'd hold off till after the first of the year.
Yeah, it's probably better. We have consensus.
Yeah, I hate to postpone it, but I think it needs to, I think.
We'll just schedule it to send it out the first week of January then.
That's probably a good idea.
That's what they used to do with the tax forms, they always got pretty good response with that. The IRS used to send that, the tax form, the first week of the year, that always worked, you know.
Is there anything keeping, hold on, hold on a second, is there anything keeping us from putting the form online now, though?
No, there's, no, we can do that.
Because if we did that, the more people that use it without a mailer, the less mailers we have to mail out.
Yeah, we've got them ready to go.
Yeah, we can put it out, put that up, and then, even though it's a small list of constant contact, we can say, hey, we're shutting down constant contact, we're creating a new list, if you want to get on it, the form's here, and we can call those addresses out for January, that should be through.
Yeah, that, that's ready to go.
No, no, we'll call the addresses out, but.
Oh, okay.
Well, this will, this will be a good test, too, to see how the form works, and if we're collecting the right kind of data, and just kind of, you know, a trial run, I guess.
Oh, that's a good idea, yeah.
57? That's good. When you fill yours out, then we'll say it's 57.
Not for a minor.
You're on the committee. Oh, we'll answer it for you, we got 10,000 votes for, you know, for emails or something.
That's it.
Okay, last thing, we had, we had a citizen complaint with a dock busted up and floating all over the place. I'd sent you something, any quick resolution on this, or was it code issue, or where to go?
The city would not be responsible for pulling the lumber out, and I checked with a couple of other cities, no. If, if the, what I was told, that we would do the same thing, if they brought the wood to the road and cut it in pieces, we'd take it with the trash. And if they brought it to a boat dock, unfortunately, our boat dock is not open right now, but if they towed it there, we would pull it out and get rid of it. And that's pretty much what other cities do. I did talk to Merd, actually, I don't know, I might have woke him up, because I called him at 7:00 this morning, by accident.
You got his call?
And we had emails back in the, over the weekend.
Well, I mean, the only thing is, obviously, if we have bad docks, which I think was a part of the trip, you know, we can head it off. I don't know whether this was a good dock that got blown apart with the bad weather, or a bad dock that was just, you know, should have never been there in the first place, so.
Can I, can I tell you, I kind of made rounds, I guess, Saturday, and saw that there were probably about five or six docks that are halfway destroyed. You know, and several that were completely gone. With the amount, that high tide and the wave action and the uplift, the dock will look perfectly fine, but it doesn't take much to destroy a dock when you have that high tide like that. So there are quite, there was a lot of damage.
Can we get code out, I mean, Jody found these in one trip around the city, can we, I mean, I know you guys got a kayak, there's people, you know, Dave graciously gave the boat, I know another gentleman offered a boat one time. Before this happens and we lose a $100,000 boat or something, can we?
If we can, if we can get Jody offered.
Yeah, I told Lynn this morning, I said, look, I'm happy to show you what I found, you know, there are, there are several docks completely gone, there were some that we can probably go to the front door and say, you're going to have an issue, you need to get the rest of it taken care of, or removed.
Well, if we can work something out, we need somebody to go.
The problem is, right now, you probably don't want your boat in the water.
Right now. But again, safety, I mean, you know, there's, there's safety issues, so.
Okay.
Do we have anybody else? Thanks for a good meeting, welcome adjournment, anybody have an objection to adjournment? Never do. Have a good meet, have a good Thanksgiving, everyone, and we'll see you on the 7th.